Started with our pre-meeting. Thank you everybody for coming. I want to, I guess first off, let's cover a couple of things as far as timeliness and decorum. So we want to thank everybody for coming. We love, love public input. We're glad to see a lot of faces and people here. So love to hear what you have to say. We want to hear what you have to say. It is inappropriate to have signs or any type of flashing items in the audience. So just so everyone's aware that it would be against the decorum. And this first meeting, we'll just kind of go over, do our little work session and then we'll start the meeting. I need kind of what, what I need to cover in this.
So in this meeting, we're just going to be discussing the items that are on the agenda. I'd probably recommend to jump to the public hearing items and then go back to the administrative item, item number two, if we have time. But I'd like to spend as much time as we can for Scott to go over the ordinance and make sure that you guys are up to speed on that. And then if we don't have enough time, we can get to item number two. Just a reminder, at the end of the meeting, we are going to have some training. It meets our four hour requirement for training for the planning commissioners a year. So it'll probably be an hour, it won't be four hours. So it'll count towards that training. And I think Corbin's going to be talking about meeting decorum, public clamor, different things like that. But that'll be at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. So let's go ahead and go over legislative items. We'll go ahead and skip, kind of go spend some time there, Scott.
Yep. So on your agenda, obviously, we're skipping that first administrative item for that design review. We'll spend in this pre-meeting sometime discussing the proposed text amendment, which is a legislative item. And then when we get into the regular meeting at five, we'll go back and talk about the administrative item first for that designer view, and then we'll come back to this proposed text amendment. Just so we use this pre-meeting to our benefit. We'll talk a little bit about what is proposed in this legislative item for the text amendment. And as a point of clarification, just real quick with the public present, I wanted to also clarify, we have two items related to the Nordic area on the agenda. On the agenda, you'll notice the first item for a public hearing is for a proposed text amendment to the form-based village zoning ordinance. The second item is a work session item for a proposal to rezone 510 acres to that farm-based village zone. So that second item as a work session item is still open to the public. We simply won't be holding a public hearing for that item today, but we will hold a public hearing for that item at the next planning commission that is coming up. So that was a point of clarification, just so that individuals on the commission also in the audience understand how that agenda works. Okay. Both of those Nordic items. We lost the mic. John Test? Commissioner Lewis, can you hear us? Okay, there we go.
Yeah, you're good now.
Okay, I'm gonna, Commissioner Lewis, did you guys hear anything previously to now? Okay, I'll go back over this for those who are on Zoom. Unfortunately, we'll, we'll get through it. But I appreciate you bringing that to attention. So the first thing we wanted to do as part of this pre-meeting is explain what is on the regular session agenda. So on the agenda, we have an administrative item for a design review of some proposed storage units. That'll be the first item that we hear on the regular session agenda. Then going forward, there is a public hearing scheduled for a proposed text amendment to the form-based village zone. That item will be discussed at length and we'll have a public comment period for that item. The other item on the agenda related to Nordic is scheduled as a work session item. That item is open to the public. So you're welcome to listen in on that discussion, but it will be a work session between staff and the planning commission. And no public comment will be held for that item today. We will hold public comment for that item at the next upcoming Ogden Valley Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for the fifth of next month. So public notices and postcards will be sent out for that particular meeting by the end of this week. Right? You guys have any questions about that agenda and how that will be held? Okay, so for the next 20 minutes or so, we are in what is called a pre-meeting. The pre-meeting is where we can just explain what's on the agenda, walk through some, some basic comments, and then we'll get into each item in detail once the regular session begins at 5:00 PM. Okay? Now that we've kind of set the plate for what we have before us. In this pre-meeting, we'd like to discuss the second item on the agenda or the proposed text amendment to the form-based village zoning ordinance. Okay? We're skipping that first administrative item to spend a little bit more time on this text amendment. So sound good commissioners. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, first thing I'm sharing here is an important portion of the 2016 Ogden Valley General Plan. The Ogden Valley General Plan is a document that was reviewed embedded by the public as a roadmap to how will we accommodate development going forward over the next decade or two. The general plan is an important document because it is vetted by the community, adopted as a guiding document that we reference when we have applications for development. And what I'm showing here is an exhibit from that general plan that shows where we would like to accommodate commercial locations and village areas. Where do we want to funnel development growth? What we see on this exhibit is a couple of red circles. Those red circles were areas identified as a preferential receiving area for development growth. The alternative, if we don't identify where we want development to occur, is it will occur where it lies or where the zoning is for each landowner in the valley. So zoning dictates where that can occur. Most of the valley floor is a three acres zoning minimum for each new house or dwelling that is built. If, for example, we allow for that development to occur as zoning dictates today, it would be a sprawl style development where we would have a home every three acres. What the general plan identified as we looked through different development alternatives of how we want the valley to grow over the next decade or two, we identified different scenarios. And the scenario we see on this map before you is what was selected as the preferred alternative, where we don't want to allow sprawl. We don't want to see homes every three acres throughout the valley floor. We want to channel that development into specific areas. And the red circles are where those areas have been identified. Okay? So that was in 2016. Fast forward to 2020, 2021, 2022, staff have been working on a form-based village zoning ordinance. That ordinance is a tool through which we can implement this strategy that was identified in the general plan. The form-based village ordinance allows for the transfer of density into these villages and dictates how that density should be realized in the form of built environment. As part of that effort, we first started with Newtown, Old Town Eden. And those two areas are shown on the map in these red circles as the first villages to be planned. And that ordinance was passed just a couple of months back where we know what, if any development occurs in those areas, what it should look like. And then as part of what we are looking at today is what does development look like in the Nordic Valley ski area or the Nordic Valley Village? So we are looking at that form-based village zoning ordinance and identifying ways to establish the design, the layout of the Nordic village area. Does anyone have any questions on what it is we're looking at in this proposal as far as the text amendment is concerned? What we have in the staff report is a clean version of that ordinance. It is a, if adopted in its, in its current form, that's what it would look like if we were to codify that document, put it into our land use code. We also emailed out a red line version, that red line version, you have a copy in front of you there today. And we'll also walk through that during the regular meeting. But that document lays out in red text that is stricken as proposed to be removed. Blue underlying text, which is proposed to be added. And then green double stricken text, which means we've cut it from one section and pasted it into another. I'll show you what that looks like here. So the document we'll be reviewing looks similar to this. It's the red line. It shows what the existing language is in black text. So that's not proposed to be changed. Red underlying text is proposed to be added. Stricken red text is removed and so on and so forth. So we'll go through that in detail in the regular meeting. The commissioners, as you've looked at this and the pack of materials throughout the week, are there any specific questions you have as far as this agenda item is concerned? So in brief synopsis, the staff report lays out kind of in bullet point form, the broad strokes, what it is that we're changing here. Let me hop over to that document. Anybody who has a copy of the staff report from online will be able to review this as well. So as bullet point synopsis, we're changing some definitions. We're changing the land use table and updating the land use table. We're adding special regulations to specific land uses. We are adjusting the different street regulating types to add a medium lot residential street type into the stratification of street types. We are making some adjustments to the development standards and the street cross-sections. We're looking at height allowances, adjustments to parking standards, addition of specific Nordic village design standards, which include architectural standards for Nordic specifically. And then we're also adding the street regulating plan for Nordic. We already have street regulating plans for Newtown and Old Town Eden. Part of this proposal would be adding a street regulating plan for the Nordic village area. There's also some additional items in the red line that I haven't highlighted as a bullet point item in the staff report that we can talk about. But in synopsis, that's a brief overview of all that's changing. Report is being proposed to add Nordic village specific language. Any questions from there? Do you want to talk about any of the other items on the agenda in this pre-meeting?
Yeah, Scott, would you verify for us work session versus the legislative item, three versus four? Obviously, it states here that we can discuss or take action, but what? I understand. What, what, what can you clarify that for us?
Yeah. So on this, on this first item, the first legislative item for the proposed text amendment, because it is legislative, we did notice for it to be held as a public hearing tonight. Now, that public hearing doesn't mean you have to take action. You certainly can if you'd like to. But your action will be a recommendation to the county commission or the legislative body. We will be making a future decision on this item. The work session is simply a work session to become more acquainted with a proposal for the actual rezone of the property in question. So we'll talk about the rezone process, that application and work session, but there is no public hearing on that item and there is no action that is able to be taken. And to clarify, the planning commission can, but does not have to take action on the legislative item for the text amendment tonight.
So we can not be taking action on the work session items?
Correct.
We, we can, but we don't have to legis-
Correct.
Questions?
When you look at the legislative item where you have the public hearing associated with it, if you choose to forward on a recommendation to the county commission, you can do that based upon what's proposed or you could condition it. Or you could table asking for staff to do additional research or modifications to that. So it's not like Scott mentioned, it's not a one or that type.
Okay, we don't have any questions? Do we want to go over number two?
Do you want to talk about the administrative item or do you want to talk about the work session item?
Number two, looks like an administrative item.
Yeah, that's up to you guys. If you have questions for Tammy, that is one of the other projects that is on the agenda. So we'll just have to hold tight for 10 minutes until the regular meeting is scheduled to start.
You have one quick question. And of the chart, there is a key that where did I see it? It tells what
I think I know what you're talking about. Let me share my screen and see if. Yep. So there is a, as I'm showing on my screen here, there is a editor's note that specifies the color types. So we have various street types that are shown on the street regulating plan. They're color coded and they range from governmental and institution all the way down to open space. There's also further down in the document, a description of each of those street types. Let me find that here. RGB is a color code. It's a way that we communicate a very specific color based on red, green, blue values. Yep. So on to your first question, page 40 dictates what each color type and street type is. So it spells out those acronyms and provides a definition as to what that street type is. And then those street types are a common theme throughout the ordinance as far as the land use table, the standards tables. It dictates based on street type what we're trying to.
I just thought it might be helpful at the very beginning, when it's first used to say, see page something for.
Yeah. Well, that's a great, great comment. So it's kind of set the stage early on in the document. One other thing, Commissioner, as we get into this, we can also see, but as we get into the lot development standards, each of the tables spells out those street types in addition to their acronym. But I think it is good, a good comment to take these acronyms and spell them out early before we get into the land use table. That's a good idea. Let me just point out the numbering on these pages in our packets. There are dozens of pages that are labeled 58 of 58. Must have been an error with, with word numbering. Now, we'll have to point those out. I was scrambling to figure out where's page 40. Commissioner, it reminds me, I didn't give you a copy. So the red line copy does have page numbers and it looks like it goes forward. Numerically, so hopefully that'll clarify as we go through. Commissioners, you may also recall that we created this code for Alden Newtown Eden just a few months ago. So this is basically taking that and moving it over to the Nordic area. So we're creating that same form-based code that we created for Alden Newtown even and just applying it to the Nordic area. We do intend to look at the other village zones as well, so we can meet the general plan requirements and create a form-based code for each one of the village areas up in the Ogden Valley, which has been requested by the public through the general plan.
Out of curiosity, why there isn't one on the master plan map?
So Powder Mountain was part of already resort zone area as well as snow basin. And so you'll notice on the plan that those areas were already created. We have development agreements already associated for those areas. And so because that was already done, that was not part of the general plan because it wasn't placed. Scott, while we're waiting, it might be good to just let the public know that where this document can be found. Yeah. And so they can look at that as well. Yeah, let me run you through exactly how to find it. So on your browser, if you Google Weber County Planning. Weber County Planning, the first thing that pops up is the Weber County Planning Division's website. If you click on that first link, it'll take you to our homepage. And where you'll want to look is under Frontier. Frontier is the county's land use application and permitting portal. So when you log into this, this portal, you want to create an account. So we'll set up a username and password. Once you're logged in, you can go to development projects on the top of the page and search by Nordic Village. Okay, the two items that pop up are the two items that are on our agenda tonight. We have a zoning map amendment. We have a zoning text amendment. The zoning text amendment is the item that we will be holding a public hearing on. The zoning map amendment is the rezone application that will have a work session on. This is the item that we will hold a public hearing on at our next meeting on the fifth. If you click into either one of these project pages, you'll notice that there are several tabs. The tab that you want to look at is documents. Okay, the documents tab has all the documents that we will be uploading as part of this, of this review and approval process. And the document that you want to look at is the staff report. The staff report is what is provided to the planning commission for their review and consideration prior to the meetings. It provides a synopsis of the request and it provides for additional analysis and exhibits that bring together and communicate the intent of what is being requested.
Scott, can you tell us why we pushed the second item to a work session?
Yeah.
I know that was mentioned. Just want to reiterate that.
It was. So procedurally, when we have these types of applications, legislative applications, rezones under state code require a very specific noticing requirement. They require us that we notice that item as a public hearing at least 10 days in advance in a local newspaper, on our website, through the Utah Public Notice website as well. But also requires on a rezone that we send a postcard to neighbors within 500 feet of the boundary of the property being proposed for a reason. That postcard did not get mailed and that was an administrative oversight on our end. So we pushed that from a public hearing tonight to a work session. And then we will re-notice that item to be held at the next meeting.
Okay.
So just as far as more people coming in as five o'clock hour hits, do we? Do we want to say there are seats up front or do they want to open the back?
There are seats up front, seats inside here. Can we open the back?
We can. Let me. Yeah.
Do you need help with that? Give it a few minutes just so they can get that open and people can social distance. Give it a few minutes, just so they can get that open and people can social distance. Trevor, are you still going? Can you hear us now, John? Okay, everybody, I think we're going to go ahead and get started while they work on the back there. Think we'll want to welcome everybody. Thanks for coming. And we're going to call it to a meeting of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission for a second, and we're going to start with the pledge of leave. Okay. Let's go with. Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Burton, Mr. Torman, Mr. Francis, Mr. Montgomery, and joining us online is Commissioner Lewis. Meeting minutes, we had a couple of changes that we need to get submitted. Certain they made it to this package. Jeff, can you help us with that?
I did see the minutes.
And are they corrected as requested?
Right, they looked good to me.
You have these, these minutes as submitted here, are they accurate?
Yeah, I sent in a couple of notes on this. Some errors that I found. And was instructed to bring them up in the meeting rather than correcting them beforehand. And as I look at the minutes in our packet, my reference was to page eight of the January, I guess it's twenty-fifth meeting. Every page in here in these minutes is labeled page eight. John and I are trying to find the place. We can't find it. We think that page is missing here.
Yeah.
On page eight of the packet, as it was originally sent out, there's a reference to council commission. That should be the county commission. On page nine. I know that the second sentence incorrectly reflects my Commissioner Burton's statement that it states that requiring TDRs for accessory dwelling units is consistent with good planning principles. My recollection and opinion is that it, to the contrary, my impression was that it did not reflect good, and it's not incon- it is clearly inconsistent rather than consistent with good planning principles. And I went on and described more of my discussion at that time. Also, on the February first minutes. That was a lengthy meeting. I recall that there was some discussion of valley residents having to incur additional fees for parks and other amenities at their expense, which would draw folks from other counties out of the valley to come use these things that the valley residents required to pay for, but at no cost to them, and I thought that was inappropriate. And I thought, I suggest that that discussion I recall as having be represented reflected in the minutes.
And we just wanted that stated on record for this meeting so that it's recorded in then one of those changes.
Yeah, so there's been some corrections submitted and edits that will be made to the minutes and they will, the all the planning commission members have been given a copy of the amended minutes and have a chance to review that with that, the amended minutes.
So my, my communication could be attached to those minutes.
It will be. Yeah, thank you. Right, John, or right, Rick, Rick?
So, I think that, thank you.
Okay, do any planning commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications to declare for any of today's agenda items?
That would just be on the administrative issue.
Yeah. Haven't noticed any, so we'll move on to the, our agenda for today. We have, we have a couple of things on the agenda. We have a petition for request to approve the design review application for storage units located approximately forty-seven oh east, twenty-six fifty north, Eden. We have Tammy. I would like to take a quick poll mission to find out what everybody is in the room is here and online is here for, just so we can try to help manage the time that we have together. And so just if you would quietly raise your hand, let me know which, which item you're here for. Way we can, we can kind of manage the meeting around getting as much public input as possible. Who is here for item number two, the petition application or the administrative item for request for approval, design review application for Stuart, storage units? Okay. And then legislative items, the public hearing to discuss or take application, action on application to amend the form-based village. Okay, thank you. June, can you unmute Commissioner Lewis? Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, I, I guess I might have skipped this. Want to make sure, is there any conflicts of interest or ex parte we might not have been able to catch?
No.
Okay, thank you. Right, with that, let's let's move on with the, with the agenda. We'll start with the administrative item. Tammy?
Good evening, commissioners. This is going to look a little bit familiar. I believe this came before you under a rezone application back in November to extend that CD2 zone to the boundaries of this parcel. Just a little bit of history kind of going forward, they received approval, final approval from the county commission for that rezone and the associated development agreement back on January fourth. On February sixteenth, they received administrative approval for a one-lot subdivision in the CD2 zone. And then on the twenty-second of February, they submitted their application for design review for these storage units. You have before you a proposal for seven self-storage units. This is the site plan here. This is the proposed site plan. I think most of this information is in your staff report. I'm going to apologize. I think the ultimately the approved building elevations were not included in the staff report. There was a little bit of confusion as to what was finally approved. Here you have the site plan. Seven buildings here, as you can see, this is the entrance off of Clark Lane. And then you've got your buildings that go all the way around the perimeter. This development agreement that was approved included landscaping standards. It included improvement standards. Just so you're aware, as a part of the subdivision, we did require a ten-foot wide trail easement to run along the western boundaries. We've got about five hundred and twenty-one linear feet of trail that will be dedicated once that subdivision plot reports. These are the elevations in the development agreement. I just want to kind of show you what's in the development agreement versus what has, what have been some slight changes. Again, more elevations that are shown in the development agreement. I don't believe there is a proposal to have any red-colored structures in here. I'm going to go down now and show you, and these are labeled, by the way, if you look at the development agreement, for some reason, the, the buildings are labeled Buildings A through F instead of one through seven. A little bit of clarity on this slide here. These are the proposed elevations for these buildings. There's not a whole lot that's changed other than the colors. They have provided some of the required cupolas to kind of break up the face. They've got slightly different elevations of the roof line, though the slope of the roof is maintained. There, we've got more of the same. And this is the rear. You can see where they've added some architectural detail to break up this sort of monotonous line of structure here. A couple of things to note, this is located in the CD2 zone, so there are no area requirements, no width requirements. The setback standards are ten feet from their side lot lines and rear lot boundaries unless they've got some sort of agreement, maintenance agreement with their neighbor, and then they can snug up their buildings a little bit closer than that. I'm not aware that these are going to be closer than ten feet, except for perhaps in a couple of areas. And again, they would have to provide us with the necessary documents before we would issue final approval of their buildings. Lighting locations, they've actually proposed nine lights, and I think, like I may have missed one on here. They do have nine streetlights. What the applicant has submitted to us, as far as lighting specs, are just a little bit contradictory to what we have in our lighting code. And so one of the conditions of approval in the staff report is that any lighting proposed can form to our outdoor lighting ordinance in our land use code, and we will issue final approval of those again before they can get C of O. They can't lease any of these units until they have that C of O, just so you know, okay? Parking location, they have proposed two parking spaces on site right near the entrance. This is proposed to be a gated facility, so while they're proposing fencing all along this perimeter and they're showing some of the landscaping standards, the development agreement requires along this eastern boundary here that separates them from residential area immediately adjacent, that they either provide an eight-foot-wide earthen berm or with trees on top of that, sorry, eight-foot tall, or that they provide an eight-foot-tall wall. They have to have some kind of separation between this commercial use and the adjacent residential use. This is just kind of a summary. Do you have any questions for me right now? Yes, sir.
Design review, and then you have one for the approval, the review. DR two zero two two dash oh one, then you have DR zero two 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 two, zero two two, design review. And so that that would be collectively into the same.
Yes. Yeah, the correct application for this, for the purpose of this meeting is DR two zero two two dash zero one. Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Any other questions for me?
Your map with the, with the elevation, with the contours on it disappeared here.
No.
Is there an elevation difference where that berm or fence is supposed to go between that and the property to the east of it?
The berm is supposed to be eight feet tall with the minimum of four-foot-tall trees on top of that. Okay.
And what's the elevation of the, the comparative elevation of the property immediately to the east?
Pull that up here. Let me look at building three here. I can't recall which ones have cupolas on them. Building, these are all about seventeen to nineteen feet tall.
Yeah, but back to your map, there's a, an existing home shown to the east.
Yes.
Look at that existing building. I'm kind of remembering that's on a hill. Is that correct?
I think it is on a slight hill.
So this would shield one of the buildings from that home. one of the buildings from that home by putting up the fence and the berm.
Yes, it likely would not shield the entire height of the building. I think the purpose of this generally is to mitigate the nuisance of having traffic in and out of there of moving things around to buffer some of the sound that comes from just moving things in and out of storage units as well.
Thank you.
Is the developer here?
I'm not sure if the developer is here.
Can you answer a couple of questions for us? Come speak into the mic, please. The fence, would that be, is that just on the east side, or would it be near this home as well? The eight foot berm or the the eight foot fence that
Just between building two and three. Was your question about that? Sorry, what was your question about that?
The question is in regards to the fence or the berm. Is it going to be also on the, what would be the west side of the building and the east side? My understanding from reading is it is on the east side, would also be in between the existing building and your storage units.
I believe it's just from the corner of building two to building three.
And to help you clarify is that the developer actually owns that existing house right there, the residential houses to east that houses under his ownership, which is also a commercial zone. So it's only on that building one. It's not on that side.
It's not on the east side.
We're separating uses here, not necessarily zones. So while the existing home may be in a commercial zone, it is a residential use, and so we are going to require a wall or a berm all along the eastern boundary of this development. Internally, I believe Mr. Allen is proposing a fence to have this be a secured facility. So he's got fencing proposed immediately around the buildings. In fact, you can kind of see where he's looking to close off any gaps between the structures with his proposed fencing. That's different than the wall or berm requirement all along this eastern boundary here. Does that clarify or answer your question? Mission Burton isn't convincing right now. Do you have more questions to that? Was able to answer that for you?
Okay, if I understand correctly, it's all commercial zone. But we're going to have a berm to protect part of the commercial zone from the other part of the commercial zone.
Because there is a residential use within that commercial zone. So we're separating uses, not zones.
And the developer is happy to do this.
It is part of his development agreement. He's obligated to.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the developer?
Planning Commissioners, any questions? Um, I noticed we have one comment. We'll take one public comment on this if that's okay. Please come to the the mic, please, and state your name and where you're from. And be to be into, just to clarify, this is an administrative item. We are, there's very little that we can, we can change and do.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And I didn't know if this was appropriate or not, but my name is Frank Moll. I live in Ogden. My son lives up in this area. Excuse me, and I just received a text from him that this is something that may be very near his, his home. So my question was, is this near the residential area near Staples Drive there? And just east of the LDS chapel, there's the LDS chapel that there's a development east of that. And then he thinks these are going in just to the east of that. So he would be concerned whether there is a fence and a barrier of some kind on the west side of this, of these items.
This is behind Snow Crash Junior High.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, now, this is not the one that he was, he was worried about.
That is directly west of.
I saw this on the on the agenda, and I gave him a text, and he texted back, said, yeah, I'm concerned. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll undertake a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I move to approve petition number DR two zero two two dash zero one and DR zero two 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 zero two two. Storage unit and design review located at forty seven oh eight east twenty six fifty north Eden, Utah. Four point four six nine acres, CB two, Commercial Valley Zone. This approval is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and to all state and county agencies requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
I'll second.
Motion to approve in a second. I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. During votes, seems like we are, it is unanimously approved. Is there any one on the commission that'd like to explain their vote? Moving on to legislative item for number three. The public hearing to discuss or take action on an application to amend the form-based village zoning ordinance along with other sections of the Weber County Land Use Code to add provision provisions and exhibits intended to create Nordic Valley Village area. I don't see Rick here, and with Rick being out, Charlie, can I ask you to explain the decision type here as we've shifted from administrative to legislative?
Having to do so, and I apologize for Rick's absence for the moment. The front doors apparently automatically lock at five o'clock. We just wanted to make sure people could still make it. So he's out there being a nutcher. So this is a legislative item. The difference between a legislative item and administrative item is that there's wide deference that the planning commission can use in making an approval for a legislative item. One of the reasons why we have a general plan, the reason why a general plan is created and adopted is to give guidance on how to make decisions and what types of decisions you should be making when it comes to legislative types of decisions. For example, the project that you just voted on being an administrative decision, you've got very limited ability to say no. It's essentially a land right that the landowner has, and so the approval that you just gave was appropriate. Whereas the legislative item, like the one you're about to go into, the the question really should reside in, does it comply with the general plan? And if it does, the obligation is not to say yes. It it would be futile to have a general plan that that talks about villages and have you deny a village. However, if the general plan's wrong, maybe it's wrong. So something to think about as you're looking at the wide discretion that you have. Overall, once you have made a decision on tonight's item, the county commission will then take it up and make a final decision. And they've got the same wide discretion that you have to say yes or no to the item. Any questions about that?
Well, thank you. With that, Scott, looks like you're you're up to discuss this legislative item for public hearing on the application to amend the form-based.
Thank you, Commissioners. What we'd like to do is kind of set the stage for this, give a brief synopsis of of a of history, how we've gotten to this point. We'll talk about the general plan. We'll talk about.
Can I just verify that everybody can hear us online? Don, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Okay, so we'll go through the general plan briefly, kind of set the stage for how we have gotten to a form-based village zoning ordinance in the first place, and then why we are looking to amend it as part of this application. So I'll talk a little bit about the the general plan. Charlie's going to talk a little bit about the form-based zoning principles. Why we went with form-based zoning versus the traditional Euclidean zoning that most people are familiar with, and how and why it is part of this ordinance. Okay? Real quick, I'm gonna jump over to the general plan. If anybody would like a copy of the general plan, it is available on the Weber County planning website. So I invite everybody to take a look at that. This document was, it's a publicly vetted and adopted document that was worked on through twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and adopted in twenty sixteen. There was a lot of public input on that plan to get it to where it is today as our guiding document as far as how and where we will accommodate growth in the future. Okay, so it is kind of the document that we always go back to to reference when we have applications such as these to rezone property, to create villages, to accommodate the growth that is is bound to come. The question that was asked back in in twenty fourteen through twenty sixteen is how do we want this growth to be accommodated? We know that it's coming. We can't stop it. People don't stop having kids, and we don't have people interested in moving into the valley. That's it's not a question of of whether we want it to come or not. It is going to come. So how? How and where and why are we going to put this this density? Okay, so throughout the general plan, there's various sections. We talked about land use, transportation, modernizing housing, various topics. Each of those components have goals and objectives that helps set the stage of how we will accommodate development. When we look at the general plan's future development, what we have is an exhibit. I'll share this here. We looked at this briefly in the pre-meeting. But for those who weren't in the pre-meeting and weren't able to hear this, I'd like to make sure everybody recognizes this document and what it's trying to tell us. So this exhibit is map eight on page thirty one of the general plan. It talks about commercial locations and village areas. Okay, the overall theme of the general plan is let's not increase the base density of what we have already allocated to property through existing zoning. That was, that's a common theme. We don't want to increase density. Let's not, you know, take density from three acres and reduce it to one acre, which would triple the density. We want to keep those those density rights the same as they are under current zoning, but we would like to move them to areas that are more appropriate or more desirable. So on this exhibit, you know, we looked at different alternatives for where do we want development to be realized? You know, the alternative of do nothing is allow each property owner to subdivide their property based on their zoning and put up houses based on those standards. So if you own nine acres in the three acres zone, you could theoretically put in three houses. That's kind of how that would look. If that were to occur and all that density were to be realized, we would have a valley floor without a house about every three acres or so, which was not the desired alternative in this general plan process. We said, do we want that? Yes or no? The answer was no. What the ultimate decision was as far as guiding the development was to do what's called cluster style or village style development, where we try to preserve large swathes of open space as farm ground and, you know, pristine areas we want to keep open. But in order to do so, we have to move that density somewhere. Those property rights exist, and in order to preserve open space, we have to allow it to go somewhere. So the alternative was chosen to select specific village areas where this density would be realized. And so on this exhibit, we show in these red circles where we would like to have the density directed to. So we're not increasing the overall density in the valley as a whole. We're simply moving it to more appropriate areas. Okay? Something to clarify. Typically, when we rezone people to different zoning classifications, the density can change. But in the form-based village zoning ordinance that we have before us today, the intention is not to do so. The intention is to allow the density to increase only by transferring density rights from other areas that we desire to leave open and bring them into the village core. Okay, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to take this concept, this desired development pattern is established by the general plan and bring it to fruition. And that's why the form-based village zone as a tool was established. So that that ordinance was adopted a few months back, and it set the stage for development in new town and old town needed. New town and old town even have what we call street regulating plans, and that's a function of form-based zoning. And Charlie will talk a little bit more about what those street regulating plans are, how they differ from Euclidean zoning, and how form-based zoning works in general. Okay, Charlie, you want to give that synopsis?
Planning Commissioners, I'm going to bore you for just a little bit because you guys have heard this probably ad nauseam, but because as we were working through the form-based village zone, we didn't have a lot of public participation. There are probably quite a few people in the room tonight who are not familiar with this concept. So let's, let's do a little recap. Okay, so first off, I wanted to make sure it's clear to you, planning commissioners, as well as everybody in the room, form-based village zone has already been adopted. It was adopted in January by the county commissioners after at least two years, if not three years worth of discussion with the planning commission. The form-based village zone was created initially for the Old Town and New Town Eden area. They were our, they were the first village areas that we decided to kind of take a chunk out of the general plan and and tack. And so as you saw from the map that Scott had up on the board, you saw Old Town Eden and New Town Eden both had circles around them for future village areas. As part of that, form-based really looks at design more than it looks at land uses. And when Scott says Euclidean zoning zoning that we're all used to, when you look at a zoning map, you see a bunch of properties that have been colored a certain color, and that color means something. When we look at form-based codes, we're generally looking at streets instead of land. And that's because the streets are what the public experiences. You don't get to experience private property unless you're invited on private property, except when you're standing at the public property. And so form-based zones, or excuse me, form-based codes, what they do is they try to address the way things look from the public perspective or the public realm, which is usually the street. And so in a form-based code, we create a street regulating plan. So instead of a zoning map, it's a street regulating plan. And those streets are all colored a certain color, and each of those colors correspond to what can and cannot happen adjacent to that street. We're talking about the design of the buildings adjacent to the street. But something our form-based code does not do is we don't get into those areas that have single-family housing and say your houses have to look a certain way. It's just not something that is palatable to local politics to get that deep involved in people's private housing. But a public facility or multi-family facility or a commercial and whatnot, those those become a little bit more free game when it comes to design standards because, you know, it's possible for them to turn into disasters if they're not carefully regulated on on how they look. And so when you're looking at a street, you think about looking straight down the road just from the windshield of your car, and you've got the walls of your street, which are the building fronts. Now, if they're set back thirty feet, fifty feet, a hundred feet, those are still a wall to your purview. The desire behind a form-based code is to look at those walls and say, they should take this general shape. The actual function of those buildings is far less emphasized. So you want to put any kind of use inside that building, for the most part, a true form-based code would say that's, generally speaking, that's okay. Because what happens inside of that building, as long as it doesn't spill outside where everyone else can experience it, is fine. It's behind closed doors. It's behind the wall. We don't really care what's in there. Now, you can imagine a nightclub, you know, that might create some sounds outside of the building if it's not insulated correctly. And so we do want to, you know, be cautious about the uses that are allowed and not just turn a blind eye to them. But the primary focus is not what goes on inside the building. It's what goes on outside the building because that's what everyone is experiencing from a street view. Okay? So as you can see, what we have up on the screen right now is the county's code. If you were to go to the county website, look for the county code on the, from mun code. Mun code is our codifier, official codifier for the Weber County code. And I am right now in chapter one oh four dash twenty two, Form-Based Village Zone FBV. Now, this zone exists, but it has not been applied to any property yet. Our intention is to apply it to the properties that are shown on the maps inside of this. Our intention is to apply it to the properties that are shown on the maps inside of this zone. And I'll show you those maps in just a moment. So as you look at Old Town and Newtown, we know that we should be applying this zone to properties there. And we're working with the county commissioners to decide whether or not we're just gonna go ahead, rip the Band-Aid off and apply it to the properties that are currently zoned commercial. In those areas where it's unlikely the commissioners will favor rezoning properties not already zoned commercial without the landowners concerned. And so if you are looking at, maybe you have a residence that's right next to or right inside of one of these villages. It's very unlikely for the county to come and say, sorry, we're rezoning. But what it does is it carves out an opportunity for you, the landowner, to ask the county for a rezone to this zone. And if you ask the county, right now, the plan says, as long as it's on the map, that we should rezone you to this zone. And once you're rezone to this zone, all the requirements of this zone apply. So I'm just gonna scroll down through this zone. So. The reason I'm bringing this up and showing you this text is not so we all read it together. It's because when Scott shows you the red line version. He's showing you changes to the existing text that's already been adopted. Now, even if the Nordic rezone, which will happen in two weeks from now, if that does not get approved. The most of the texts that text amendments that we're showing you. That are non Nordic specific, we still recommend that you adopt those and implement those in your plan because they're adjustments or tweaks to the. Form based village zone that was adopted in January. We say adjustments and tweaks as we got going through the review of the Nordic plan, we started realizing we've got just a. A few challenging spots in our existing code. And so we're evolving as as more information comes. So as we look through, I'm just gonna scroll down through most of the text and get down to the street regulating plan, which is. The meat and potatoes. Of the form based village zone. So this is hard to see for everybody and I'm gonna pull up a higher resolution version of this, but. This is the Old Town Eden Street Regulating Plan map inside of this box here. So that box blown up gives you this image, even blown up further, give you this image around Old Town Eden. Switch over to. Higher resolution version of that. I'm just gonna zoom in on this map here just because it's easier to use. I'm gonna go to Old Town Eden. So here we are in Old Town Eden area. You see the park right here. The. General store is right here. You've got the. Blacksmith shop right over in this area here. So as you look at this map here, we know, we already know we've got some commercial uses along fifty five hundred east. We've got some commercial uses along twenty two hundred north. What this map shows is the intention of expanding those commercial uses along twenty two hundred north here. And along fifty five hundred east here. And as it expands from those two corridors, we would come back and we would fill. The block back in here with the future of the area being something that's a really small scale, you know, maybe Jackson Hole. I've heard people through the general plan process, we heard people say more park, less city. And the intention of this map here, all that green, it's a lot more park than a lot less city. So as we look at the red here, we're talking about mixed use commercial. Mixed use commercial means that you're gonna have street facing buildings that are right at the public right of way. Now, because they're right at the public right of way and we don't know what transportation is gonna look like a hundred years from now, we know we need a very wide right of way. One of the best things that the founders of this area did was created streets that are so wide, you could turn a. Team of oxen in a wagon around right in the street. Now, that's created challenges, having streets that are that wide, but it also creates opportunity. The focus of a mixed use commercial area is to have mixture of retail operations or similar types of retail operations with a storefront. Right there at the street front with street side parking. Where you get out of your car, you drive to the area, you get out of your car and you walk the area. Small boutiques, art galleries, restaurants, et cetera. And above that, up to a height, I can't remember what we limited our height at forty or forty five feet in that area. You could have residential uses. You could have office space. There's a whole variety of uses. You can have a mixture of them. Intermingled together. It really is, it allows the private market to take its own course. In what the uses of those buildings are, as long as the buildings look a certain way as you experience it from the street. And because we want it to be a walkable area, we're saying there needs to be really wide sidewalks. So even though we got a really wide, or we're gonna get a really wide public right of way in that area. Will need fourteen foot wide sidewalks so that people can do sidewalk shopping, sidewalk dining, sidewalk lounging. Shouldn't say loitering, but something to that effect. Just experiencing the community in public space with other community members. So anyone who's involved in this process and designing this area, we had a, we had a committee, a small area committee. With in the Old Town Eden with a mixture of business owners and landowners. Who came together, we went out and walked the park area, we walked these streets. And we discussed what type of future for this area maybe wanted. We bit off on this area. We tackled this area first, even though the general plan showed seven or eight different areas. We did this one first because we felt like it was the greatest opportunities with some of the best buildings. What has happened at the old blacksmith shop, the preservation of the general store, and some of the opportunities that exist right there. If we went much further with the kind of the economy or the market that is emerging. We're gonna see buildings there that just don't fit in and don't match and will not create the kind of feel or the sense of place that the community. And the business owners and landowners in this area really desire for it to be. And when you look at this, there's a lot more streets than that currently exist out there right now. A lot of these will be built in time. This is in no way intended to be a tomorrow plan. Sometimes when we look at plans like this, we think, oh my gosh, that's gonna be a year from now or even five years from now. This is probably thirty to fifty years if even that. And it really kind of depends on the market and how the market responds. Providing for retail operations at the street level, if you're gonna get retail operations down there, you gotta have people. And the only way you're gonna get people is if you have rooftops, if you have housing units. And we already know for the general plan, no new housing units should be approved. Other than what's already entitled by the zone. What Scott mentioned was what right now, you could put one housing unit every three acres across the valley floor and in some cases up the hillsides. That is what is allowed. And if we build out to full build out, that is what the the valley will look like. Now, imagine one housing unit every three acres and you're looking at it on a flat space, you know, into the horizon. Are you gonna see your buildings? Even though as we think about it now, one unit every three acres looks like it's pretty spread out. It is, you got elbow room, you're you're pretty far from your neighbors. But if you go to a subdivision where it's at one unit every three acres exactly, and you look around, you just see houses. And the image of that isn't a whole lot different than just a suburban neighborhood. Right? Very large lots suburban neighborhood, but just a suburban neighborhood. So in twenty sixteen through that general plan process, the community came together and said, we don't want this spread out everywhere. It's gonna ruin. The pastoral lifestyle that we have bought into when we moved here or when our families homesteaded here in the beginning. So the idea was, well, let's see what we could do to pick up those homes, the future homes that will come in over time and move them into these village centers. Create a market and economy where landowners who live in this area can go out to other landowners who are outside of the area. And say, hey, you've got this many density rights based on how many acres you have. We want to move, we want to buy ten of them from you and move them from your land and then put them into a multi-family housing. Project in here. Sorry, don't say project. That's a bad word in development. A multi-family housing building. In the Old Town Eden area. And when you move those families into that Eden area, you now create customers for these businesses. Now, you may say, well, what about all the all the landowners that live around here and elsewhere? They'll they'll drive to these businesses. Well, first off, driving to the area is part of the challenge and part of the problem, especially for creating mixed use walkable village. It's not a matter of driving there, picking up a gallon of milk and driving home. You need to be able to create a community and an economy that can withstand the shoulder seasons. We know that these businesses can can vary, are very likely to survive during the thick of the ski season. Or during the thick of the water ski season, right? We know that's possible, but a lot of businesses don't stay afloat because of those shoulder seasons. Because there aren't people there to get them through fall and spring. But when you have rooftops there where someone can just go down and buy a coffee, go down and enjoy breakfast or whatever it is. You've got an economy scale that helps sustain these businesses through those shoulder seasons. Chances are, they're still gonna have to supplement their their income through the shoulder seasons with revenue they bring in during the peak seasons. But they have to be able to make it through. Okay, so outside of those. Commercial areas, that's we get these orange kind of areas, the orange areas, that's multifamily residential. Okay, again, we're not creating new residential dwelling units. These are people going out to landowners, out on the valley floor, out in the farmlands and the pastoral areas and saying, I wanna move your rights. And I want to put a multifamily residential dwelling right here along one of these orange streets. So again, going back to the red, we see commercial on the bottom and a high probability of having residential above. And then you go to the orange areas, a high probability of residential, okay? And these are, this is a higher density residential. How high? We're not saying. It really depends on how many housing units a developer is willing to pick up from the hillside, or excuse me, from the valley floor elsewhere and move into this area. We do say how tall you can go. And right now, without sewer in these areas, your ability to get units is gonna be severely limited by how big of a drain you have or you can't get. And so the acreage is going to to dictate that. But in the future, there will be sewer in this area. It'll come. And when it comes, the ability to get more housing units in this area is. It is more likely. Again, the intention is have a nice clean hills or sorry, nice clean valley floor without a lot of development. Except for these areas where your town is. This is town. You think of a traditional farm town that was developed before the car was invented. You go into town, you go out of town and you know when you're in town. Right? You drive past that first building, you know you're in town. Okay. Gravitating outside of the orange multifamily and the the red mixed use commercial. We've got different variations of yellow. Yellow on a on a land use map or in a form based village code typically. To notes that it's a residential land use. And the different shades as you spread out from the middle says that it's gonna get less and less dense. So as you move from the center, we're talking about probably a single family residential. That then goes out to larger lot, single family residential. On the periphery here, that then goes out to this lighter green, which is very large lot residential. We're talking one acre units, very large lot. Very large, you know, in a three acre zone, you know, that's all relative, right? But we do have one acre development patterns. For example, somebody brought up the Staples Development over by the Valley Market or kind of Valley Market. Those are all predominantly one acre lots of them. And then you get out very far and you get the really dark green. The really dark green is intended to be three acres of green. Okay, that's how we adopted the form based village code. And the goal is to encourage people to opt in to create these facilities now. So it's it's not a secret. Just trying to think whether or not it's a secret. Up here in this area, we've got a building coming in. It's on frontier. If anybody wanted to see it. You can see it and it's gonna have commercial on the ground floor. It's gonna have residential on the second floor. It's gonna be a two story building. It's not super tall. But it's coming in on piece of property that's already commercial property. And so instead of seeing just commercial, you're gonna see a commercial building, which you would have otherwise already seen on that property. Plus six to eight residential units above that on the second floor. And they're gonna move those units from somewhere else into that second floor. So it's already working. We're already working with people to do it. We've already had, we've got two or three other people who have had very serious discussions about doing this. One other person who has already submitted an application in advance of the village zone even being. Adopted in anticipation that it will come. So we're working with other landowners. And frankly, we're working with other landowners outside the villages who have development rights, who aren't interested in developing the development. We've actually got on our. So for anyone who doesn't know, the county has a interactive mapping system that allows you to get a whole wealth of information. On your property and. So you can get, you can find this map just by going to the planning division webpage. But here we are in the Ogden Valley and I'm gonna turn on some layers here. It's around planning layers. For those to load. We were working with IT. I'll anyway, give you a, give you an example or something for you to chew on a little bit. We have a layer in our, it looks like it's probably internal now, but it used to be out here on this public website. We'll get it back out there. That back when the DRR one zone was created for Snow Basin. There was a transferable development right program that went along with the Snow Basin result. And at that time, we solicited landowners who may be interested in selling development. So we do have a layer that actually shows quite a few parcels on it that have development rights that are for sale. Now, it might be a little old and I don't know if the existing landowners, if it's changed hands, if they're still for sale. But just for everyone who is in the public, who's who's hearing my voice, if they've got the potential to re-subdivide their property. And they want to sell some of those development rights, let us know. We'd be more than happy to add it to the map because right now, it's kind of like a. It's kind of like a real estate market. You gotta know where the things are for sale and there is no MLS listing for development rights yet. But we do anticipate that if the TDR program heats up, something like that will will actually heat up as well. Okay, now over to Newtown Eden area, there's a couple of different colors here that we haven't discussed. The magenta color, that is vehicle oriented commercial. This is kind of a regional commercial. If you were to look at this type of zoning here in the Ogden area or out in Western Weber, it'd be a C three. Commercial that serves a greater region. This is kind of the the valley commercial area. You drive, this is where you drive, you pick up your gallon of milk and you drive home. So we do still provide areas for that. We still have a design standards for buildings that face these streets. So they still have to look a certain way. But it's a little more car centric, a little bit more provisions for parking lots and stuff like that in the magenta areas. And we see some more red over here. We got Valley Junction Drive. We got a little bit along one sixty two Clark Lane and twenty five fifty here. And these areas, it's the same intention as what's over here, but the design standard is different. So mixed use commercial. And the theme for the Newtown Eden area is agrarian. Sorry, I didn't tell you the theme, the architectural design theme for the Old Town area is Old Town mind style. So we worked with an architect, frankly, it was the one of the designers for the blacksmith shop. To determine what is the timeframe or the era in which we are looking at the design of certain types of buildings that we see in. These old west types of towns that still exist today. And he said, you know, some of the more attractive buildings came out within the nineteen or the eighteen eighty to nineteen ten thirty year timeframe. So that was the timeframe. We said, work with an architect, come up with a design that looks like a building that came out of this era. And if you do create a building that does that, you're gonna get your building approved. Over here in Newtown Eden, we created a design standard that is agricultural. And as long as your designs look like agricultural. Architectural style and we define what that is in the code, then you know, you'd be able to get your rezone and build your buildings. The kind of the bluish color here, that was intended to be government and institutional. Uh, now, that's not to say that you're not gonna see government or institutional facilities elsewhere, I mean, we've already got a school uh, over here. Um, and another one over south of the park over here. Um, but the intention of coloring these government institutions is to trigger or to to signal to the community. This is where you should be looking at putting your city offices, when you become a city. This is where you should be looking at putting your inter uh, intermodal hub. When you have enough people here to merit consistent bus uh, bus travel, or even. Uh, heaven forbid, you get a tracks line or something like that, again, that's hype dream way off in the future. Uh, probably not could see that for a very long time, especially with the the type of density that the current zoning has. But an intermodal hub that allows people to park and go to a ski resort. You know, before they hit the four way intersection. That might be a worthwhile thing to look at in this area here. That doesn't mean that other types of uses can't exist in this area. Uh, the intention is for all of the commercial, government institutional, or vehicle oriented. Uh, to work together to have very similar types of uses that are allowed. Uh, we're just talking about the types of buildings and then signaling to governmental agencies that maybe this is an area you should look at. Now, if you got land that's that's under one of these roads, that doesn't mean the county's coming and building a road. That means you have an opportunity. To develop your land. As long as you bring density in, if you're gonna put residential in, you have an opportunity to develop your land. And this is the, if you do, this is the the style of the design uh, that we're looking at, okay? So that's the regulating plan. Okay, so let's chat a little bit about. Uh, sorry, as I scan through these pictures really quickly, uh, these are the types of street improvements that we will be expecting. Along mixed use commercial, vehicle oriented commercial, multifamily residential, government institutional streets, those four street types. These are the types of street infrastructure we'd be expecting, okay? So uh, you've got twelve foot travel lane, which is a generous traveling. You've got eighteen feet for angle parking, which is two feet longer than it it should be. Uh, but that was how the engineers wanted it, to make sure that the extended long bed crew cab trucks with a great big hitch doesn't stick out into the lane of travel. Um, a buffer between the bumper and the bike lane, a bike lane. That's five feet wide, it's one way bike lane, so one side of the street has one way, the other side of the street has the other way. A tree lane, where you'll put your trees, kind of like you see just right out in the street out here, and then a fourteen foot wide sidewalk. One of the biggest criticisms that a lot of folks would have about the twenty fifth street area. Is that you just don't have enough space on that sidewalk to have outside activities. Some of those businesses have have got lucky and have been able to do some some street dining, it's just not easy to do. And so providing enough space here for a variety of types of uses is important. Uh, in time, if you get this much, if you get as much housing in here as we're hoping you do, let's just say you clear a hundred percent of all the extra development rights off of the farmland. And you move it into this area, you're probably gonna need a little bit more than two uh, two, or sorry, a one two lane street. And so designing it this way actually gives you some opportunities for evolution in the future, we're looking at a hundred and twenty foot street right away. Okay, and again, no one's going and and taking land to create that. This is an opportunity for the landowner to realize a benefit to themselves while while giving the public a benefit as well. In exchange, okay? Uh, different design standards for the street, uh, if there's any kind of overhang in the street, we do specify that, we specify how. How high above the sidewalk uh, blade signs or hanging signs need to be. Bowlouts, curb bowlouts, uh, nothing slows traffic down more. Than than the signal that, hey, there might be something here where the road constraints, you're not constraining the lane of travel. But you're bringing the outside shoulder closer to the travel, and so people automatically, they let off the gas. And they're a little bit more cautious and more aware of what's happening. Every time you have a crosswalk or an intersection, you're gonna wanna see a bowl out that that facilitates that. Here's another example. Putting markings on the street, colored, painted, uh, stamped with a a different theme. Uh, we worked with our uh, snowplow drivers to verify that a design like this would work. Um, and as long as it's done the right way, it will. Also, bringing the pedestrian area to the same level of the street, or. Put another way, bringing the streets to the same level of the pedestrian area. So raised intersections, our engineers have a little bit of a concern if we do raise some of these intersections, uh, cause it's gonna cost. Quite a bit of money to install the types of drainage that we're gonna need. Uh, to facilitate this, but there's a, there's a happy medium, and there's some design ways to get around that, so it's not so expensive to uh, install, operate, and maintain. Okay. Um, section one oh four dash twenty two dash seven point one, street types and right of way cross sections. That was the section that we were just in. And this is where we really kind of get into the purpose and intent explanation of what each of these street types are for. Um, I already gave you the higher level of each of those, so. Okay, moving up to design standards, so in the Old Town Eden area. This is architectural design. These are the, this is the design theme that we've been looking at, so we're looking at a base. Of a building, the body of a building, and then varying roof lines. Long horizontal roof lines that make it look like a military buffer is boring, and it generally creates a. Uh, visual cues that maybe we don't care quite as much about our community as uh, we could. Whereas if you create uh, horizontal lines that are broken every fifty to a hundred feet. Uh, just some kind of variety uh, on that, uh, you're creating a relief for the eye, you're creating a design of a building that actually invites. Uh, a sense of place and gives the the cue to the community that this is, this is a place that cares about how it looks. Okay, so that's the agricultural design uh, standard, in fact, many people may not know, uh, that's the Rose Compass Lodge. I just put a few more uh, windows on the ground floor. To go along with our design standards for commercial uh, operations on the on the ground floor. Old Town, we're looking at just the old, old style building. So I'm not saying that these are the buildings that will be built or have to be built. But these are the design and architectural styles, these are examples of of what we're talking about. We list the design theme and the architectural uh, requirements of the buildings. Um, in each of these village areas, okay? So right now, our Old Town Eden Village, uh, or excuse me, our form based village code, it has the Old Town, it has the Newtown. Tonight, we're talking about adding Nordic. Not too long from now, we're hoping to talk about adding Wolf Creek. Then we're gonna go to Liberty, then we're gonna go to East Huntsville. And then we'll go to uh, there's there's two word that are left after that uh, on the south of the reservoir. Now, I'm talking about five years in the making, I mean, getting this done to this point was almost three years. Now that we've got the bones, we can actually get into each of those areas and flesh out the design theme, okay? So again, whether or not Nordic gets approved, I would recommend that we look at approving the changes that are being suggested here for the. Uh, to the form based village zone, so if their rezon doesn't get approved, that's fine. But some of the changes that we're looking for here is uh, it's gonna be imperative to the success of the form based village zone. Okay? I think commissioners, any questions about how this works, or any anticipation of questions that you might get from the public that I can answer? Any comments? Okay? Thanks.
Okay, commissioners, we've talked about the general plan, trying to set the stage for why we even have a form based village zoning ordinance in the first place. We've talked about the form based village zoning ordinance and how it is the framework or the implementation tool for. The general plan and the desire to create village areas, move density into those areas without creating new density. Um, so we're taking that ordinance that exists, and we're injecting specific amendments to create a specific Nordic village, okay? So as we look into the red lines, what you'll see is what we are, we are proposing to adjust for the Nordic, but there are some adjustments that all also affect. All of the village areas that will eventually be part of this ordinance. So some of the adjustments do affect Newtown, Old Town Eden, but not uh, not dramatically, we're not changing the street regulating plans, and we're not changing those street types that are already identified for those. Those villages or the design standards. There are a few uses on each street regulating plan that that are adjusted in these tables, but we'll get into those details if if you'd like to. Okay, um, commissioners, I provided you with a red line, just for your quick reference, that red line document. Um, will be available on Frontier for the public to review as well. We have a clean version of the ordinance in the staff report. I know red lines are oftentimes tricky to read or comprehend what it's trying to communicate. So we put the clean version in the staff report, but a red line for those interested in the the nitty gritty details will be available for public review as well. Okay, I'm gonna hop into the. The red line, I'm not gonna do a deep dive on the language per se, because we do have. A large member or body of the public that would like to speak to this, and I wanna make sure we give, we give them time to do that. Um, but. Share this.
Stop for more time, the blue is what you've cut and paste from somewhere else?
Yeah, let me go through that, so try to stop sharing a minute. There we go, okay? Zoom in, we'll zoom in and out just to gain context and then zoom in to get into the details, but. For a red line document, those who are unfamiliar, what is shown in blue underlying text is proposed new language, okay? What is stricken in red text is proposed deleted language that we're pulling out. And then when we get further down, you'll see some green text with double strike through, that language is cut from one section and pasted into another section, okay? Everything in black text is existing text that is already adopted in the form based village zoning ordinance and is not proposed to be adjusted. Okay? So the first little bit here, we're talking about definitions, okay, the definition section is not part of the form based village zoning ordinance, it is a standalone section in the land use code that provides definitions for various uses and. Uh, topics throughout the land use code, but we do. It's still too small. Okay, so a little bit more legible. Okay, I have to get out your magnifying glasses. Um, so these definitions, we're making some modifications to some of the definitions, adding some definitions to. Uh, take into consideration what is proposed in the rest of the body of the ordinance, okay? So we're we're looking at dwellings, adding definitions for specific dwelling types, because we're becoming more specific as to the style of dwellings that are allowed in these villages. Okay, that's that's the the crux of the definitions, we wanna be more specific about what is a three family, a four family, a single family detached, those types of things, okay? Making a minor change to the lot definition standards, or sorry, the definition of a lot. I'm gonna zoom out just so we can scroll and get context, we'll zoom in when we wanna look at detail. Okay, the biggest change that you'll see initially on this proposal is the land use table, okay? I'm gonna show you the existing land use table um, from the codified version of the form based village zone. So let me get that pulled up here. Okay? Here's the the codified form based village zone, Charlie showed this a little bit, but I just wanna show you what the existing table looks like. Okay, so the header paragraph indicates that the use is outlined in the CB two zone. As provided in another section, so section one oh four twenty, apply to any property in the form based village zone that has frontage. To or gains access from the government institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use, and it goes on and on. What it's saying here is that does the table that we see in the current codified version of the ordinance. Is just listing specific uses, but it adds by reference the uses in the CB two zone as well. Okay, so this use table is actually much larger than what you see in the code, it actually points back to the CB two zone, which has its own land use table, but is. Is uh, utilized in this ordinance by reference, okay? Hopping back over to the red line, you will see that we have cut out that initial sentence. Where we are saying that these uses from the CB two zone are provided um. In addition to what's below, and we're simply adding them to the table, so we're taking the commercial uses in the other zone and adding it to the table. We've also added the uses from CVR one and CV one, our intention is to take all of the uses and all the commercial zones that we have available. Consolidating them into a single use table, instead of just referencing to them in the body of the text, want everything front and center in one. Uh, section of codes, you don't have to go back and forth between sections to understand what is and isn't allowed, okay? So that's that's the biggest change, so the table looks much larger than it was before, but in in actuality, we're just pulling everything from that reference into the same. Okay, now, reading this table. What you see is a grid of different street types in columns from left to right. Those street types Charlie talked about, they range from government institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use, commercial, multifamily, small lot, large lot. Uh, or medium, large, and it goes through from most intense to least intense, and then each column has. A designation for the uses in each row. So as you look at the uses, you look at which street type is is applicable, and you say, is it permitted? So that's a P, is it conditionally permitted, that's a C, or is it not allowed, which would be an N? Okay, so that's how you read these these charts. So the land use table is new, we went through and. It's too small. My intention about this, this overview is, I don't wanna get into the very nitty gritty specifics, I wanna help people understand what is here and why it's formatted the way that it is. We'll get into the detail if if you guys have specific questions on individual uses. Uh, but we went through this use table, top to bottom, we classified specific uses in in styles, so you'll see we have. A table for accessory uses, they have a table for. So quickly, this loads, that's why I try to leave it at a single view distance, and then. Agricultural uses um. And open spaces, agricultural uses that are animal oriented, amusement, entertaining, entertainment, recreation uses. Animal services and uses, and it kind of goes from there, so we got food, beverage, and we've tried to. Classify uses by similar type, okay, top to bottom, so it's not the traditional alphabetical, everything on a single table, we've tried to. Group them into similar uses, okay? So that's that's the land use table, it is, it does appear to be quite a large change from the original ordinance, but again, it's it's taking everything from those other commercial zones and putting it into a single use table. Okay, jump down below that, we can come back if you have questions. From there, we have a section for special regulations, these special regulations are a little bit more specific to individual uses. So as you'll see in the table, for example, under these utility uses, the public utility substation, wastewater treatment, their disposal. It has a a column for special regulations that calls out that use and says there's something more to this use that you need to be aware of. Not just whether or not it's permitted or conditionally permitted or not permitted, but if it is permitted, there are special regulations that are also associated with it. So that's what that next section is. And what we did in this section is we pulled the special regulations again from the commercial zoning ordinances and brought them into this document. So a lot of this is existing language that applied to the commercial zones. We're simply adding them here because we're making reference to those uses now in the table. Okay? So that section is existing language ported in, all displayed in one location. This particular section, density allowance and transferable development rights, you'll see that it's in green and double stricken. That means we cut this out of the special regulation section and put it in its own standalone section. It was getting to a point where it's not a special regulation for one particular, two particular uses, but it's generally applicable to. To most uses, especially residential uses, okay, so we cut this from this section and put it further down in the document as a standalone section. And then these are additional uh, general regulations or specific regulations that we've ported in from those other commercial zones. Okay, coming down to lot development standards, these tables exist in the existing ordinance, we are making a modification to all of these tables. To slot in a new street type, and that street type is medium lot residential. Before, we had a small lot and a large lot, we didn't have anything in between, and we felt like there was a need to put something in between three thousand square foot lots and twenty thousand square foot lots. So what we did is we, we took everything from small lot down, and we kind of shuffled it down in the size of the lot standard. So small lots, we used to classify that, or what we're proposing is that we change it from six thousand. So small lots, we used to classify that, or what we're proposing is that we change it from 6,000 to 3,000. And then the medium lot residential, we're changing to 8,000 within large lot at 20,000. Okay, this particular red line, for one reason or another, does not have this 8,000 shown, and that's in there on our end. But the intention is we're putting in a medium lot residential between small and large, and we're shuffling those downs. Now, a large is 20,000 square feet of rural residential, which we had called very large lot previously. We are now saying is rural residential, so that's a one acre lot, 3,000 square feet. Estate lots are the three acre lots. It's traditionals are we have in the area. Okay, and then open space. So all of these tables that follow have that injection of the medium lot residential in between smaller and larger. And then we did make some changes to the various standards, whether that's um lot width, lot area, from lot line setbacks. In in the front lot line setbacks, we, there's a few things that we are addressing. We're trying to say that from the first floor of the street level commercial building, that facade of the building, we want to dictate how far back it is set from the street. Okay, um we were previously at 15 feet on the maximum front lot setback. Um we changed that to allow that to be 20. So it's just a small adjustment that we're making as we were going through this on that. Okay. Um again, medium lot residential, we're adding in a specific standard for all other building facades that are not first floor street level commercial. Um so these are our new specific to medium lot. Um and as you read this, so governmental, institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use, commercial and multifamily. They share very similar development standards. So you'll see that this cell is applicable to each of these these street types. Okay, but if it's more specifically defined, it has its own standalone cell. Charlie, do you want to speak to this public plaza exemption language?
Yeah, perfect. Sure. So the the expectation for the buildings is to bring them up to the uh public right away, like I mentioned before. Unless it's a public gathering space, so like plaza, outdoor dining area, uh some kind of a gathering space that's open and usable by the public, then your building could be set back a little bit further. So when somebody comes in and proposes a building, if they want to have a portion, either all the building or a portion of that building set back, um they'd be responsible at that time to essentially create some kind of an instrument or something to that effect that that opens that up for public use. And then they'd have to design and install whatever improvements would be required for for a public plaza or a gathering space.
Okay, this this table is more specific to side lot line setbacks. So on your sides, how far do buildings need to be set back? Um we've made some minor adjustments. Again, we've injected this medium lot into into the table and adjusted the the standards slightly. Same thing on rear rear lot line setbacks. Lot coverage ratios. These lot coverage ratios, what that means is how much of a lot can be encumbered by an impervious surface like a rooftop or uh a building that's built, not necessarily driveways or sidewalks, but actual facilities, how much of the lock can be encumbered by an actual building? We've adjusted these slightly. Um the biggest adjustment we have made is to open space where previously we had the 20 foot, or sorry, a 20% coverage ratio allowance on some of these open spaces that we foresee being utilized in these village zones, 20% of, you know, 100 acres, a lot of land to be covered by buildings. And so we've adjusted that pretty dramatically to have a 2.5%. This particular piece of language for building location is an attempt to allow the market some flexibility and allow for developers to put in what the market demands initially, uh but not stand on or step on the toes of what the bigger picture looks like. So each building, as it as it reads here, each building shall be located on a lot in a manner that preserves space for the extension of street rights of ways shown in the street regulating plan and the lots respective setback standard. So we know that these these streets are going to become wider, but we want to put those buildings where, you know, the future would would have them be. Height, this is a a table that has been specifically amended with Nordic in mind. So you'll see that these two columns are the headers on them are specific to Nordic. Okay, so the max, I'm sorry, the minimum building height for a lot in Nordic Valley Village area on these street types is 25 feet. So that's the minimum. We don't want them to be too small. Otherwise, that may mean uh that differs from our desire to have a good pedestrian oriented, street facing commercial. But when we look at the maximum building height, a lot in Nordic Valley Village is proposed at 55, which differs slightly from the lots in in Newtown, Old Town, Eden or other villages. When you look at 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 Nordic, there's a zoning classification already established of CBR one. CBR one, under the current allowances, would allow buildings up to 50 feet. Um when you look at the standards for bottom floor, street oriented, commercial, we have indicated we want a certain roof or sorry, a certain ceiling height. When we look at these these areas, we don't want the commercial to be in an area where the ceiling head is too low. So when we want to look at some of these uses and have flexibility of uses tenants that come and go, we want to make sure that that ceiling height is high enough. So that that bottom floor is likely to be taller than maybe those floors above that are residential in use. Okay, so we'll talk about that a little bit further down. But these two columns are specific to Nordic. The others are specific to the other village areas. Okay. Okay, uh building area, maximum building footprint. So based on the street type, we don't want buildings to get too big. And so we've indicated exactly what the the upper ceiling is for building area based on street type. This is the maximum footprint along those streets. Okay, here's what we're talking about, that first floor building standards. So the minimum first four story height in government institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use um and multifamily in some cases, we're asking for them to build at 15 feet high. We don't want to have a 10 foot ceiling on the on a first floor commercial area. We want to leave that available for those types of commercial uses that typically have a higher building height. And and that's partially the reason for some of those height, alternate height proposed, ultimate height of buildings, but not entirely. Okay. Stricken this particular table, main entrance recess from facade. That's where if you have your facade right on a right on the sidewalk, we want to make sure that your entry is recessed slightly, sure doors aren't opening up into the the sidewalks and the walkways. Charlie, I think we we added this somewhere else. Okay, it's a paragraph and that's, so it's it's been stricken in table form, but it's been added in in language. Okay, penetration requirements, this is windows. We want to have some good variety in architecture. We don't want to have, you know, large uh facades without any interesting architectural elements like windows. So there's minimum requirements for penetration. Here's that main entrance requirement that replaces the table. So we want to make sure that main entrance is recessed from that that sidewalk slightly. Okay, from there, we kind of we move out of the design standards. So those design standards are specific to the street type. It's specific to how high, how wide a building should look. So it's design oriented. All these tables we just looked through. But when we get into the specific building design standards, we have separated that out by village area. Okay. So we have added some language which would allow for um a proposal to be considered that may differ slightly from the design standards. So as Charlie had mentioned, in Old Town, Eden, New Town, even they have their their design themes, whether that's agrarian or old mining town. Uh but sometimes we may have a developer that proposes something that differs from that. Maybe not much, but maybe some, but is still, you know, merits consideration. So we would like to have, you know, as part of this language, it indicates that we want to have a recommendation from an architect. We want to make sure the planning commission reviews that recommendation, and that we may be able to move away from some of those design standards without being hard and fast. We want to be able to be creative and allow for for some consideration. Yes, these existing exhibits are specific to new town, old town, even not proposed to be changed. But then we have a very specific section added for Nordic. So this is where I think we should probably get into a little bit more detail on what is proposed. Okay, so these uh these design standards are specific to projects that are proposed within the the area designated on the street regulating plan for Nordic. And it it design theme. So the theme in this area as as requested by an applicant is that the architectural styling and materials should implement a modern interpretation of Alpine design. Okay, the modern importation interpretation of Alpine design includes a balance between modern Alpine and classical Alpine design features. And then it goes on to say the following design features are intended to provide minimum stylistic requirements to implement this design theme. So we talked about roof lines, and we don't want roof lines to be stagnant. We want them to be broken every certain number of feet. We want the massing to be interesting and not repetitive. We talk about building material. We're talking about what exactly do we want to see on a building material perspective? How much of each material do we want to see? So we have some consistency from one project to the next. So in in Nordic, uh specifically, the primary building materials shall be real cut stone, glass, wood siding, or similar pairing siding with natural wood finish. And those are the the big, you know, elements. We want the majority of these buildings to have those those materials. From there, uh secondary building materials include metal, wood, large cut timbers, metal beams, columns, concrete, rather flat finished surface or flat surface building material, um which can be colored based on some of these these other standards. Okay, we want to have at least 60% primary building material. The base of the building shall be at least 60% stone, except those areas occupied by transparent penetration. Use of metal shall be limited to trim balconies, railing, exposed structural components and roofs. And no more than 10% of any uh building facade shall be exposed concrete. We talked about colors. You really want to have muted earth tones, no more than 30% of the building facade should be white. And then we provide some examples. Um these examples have been derived from uh an applicant supplied palette, I guess you could call it, of of theoretical building types. Okay. We've hand drawn a few of them, but we've also included a couple of photos, the intention being we take these these images and we also hand draw them to soften the specificity of of some of these um examples. We don't want to be overly specific. We want to be specific enough to get a common design theme. Okay, so these are some of the hypotheticals that we've we've included. You'll see that there's a lot of uh wood, stone at the base, glass and and metal is incorporated in balconies and in the window frames and so on and so forth. Okay, from there, we kind of get into back what uh the existing ordinance is already implemented with defining the street types. However, we did inject medium lot residential into that list as well. Scrolling through these right of way standards are not proposed to change. Okay, we want to get into some language specific to trees in the Nordic village. Um the applicant of this text amendment had requested that instead of having such a defined separation between street trees, every so odd number of feet, we wanted to be more artistic about it. They wanted to allow for those streets to be grouped along the right of way and and potentially allow for some of that to be less measured and spaced. So the some of the language added here for trees is talking about having the same number of trees being required, but that they be um equal to one tree every 50 feet, but that they could then be grouped together. Trying to get through this expeditiously. I know this isn't the most exciting stuff, but we can go through the the details if there's specific questions. Okay, talk about roundabout standards. We'd like to make sure we can address what a roundabout looks like. So it's been added. Then we get into the street regulating plans, and this is really the the meat and potatoes of of the proposal. Okay, what you see here is a draft street regulating plan for the Nordic area. Okay. Want to kind of set the stage here. We've delineated what we believe to be the Liberty area, the Eden area, and the Wolf Creek area. And these are different areas that are depicted in village uh nodes on the general plan. Everything that's grayed out, we we kind of define as a different uh village, not not associated with the street regulating plan. Now, in the in the finished ordinance, we will not be layering in the concept development plan that the applicant has provided us. We've added it on this exhibit just to facilitate discussion, show how what is proposed winds up or doesn't line up with what the applicant has submitted, and then talk about the the street types in in the area. Okay, so similar to what Charlie had mentioned, you'll see there's different colors associated with different street types. And the core of the proposal is that the intersection of Nordic Valley Way and Nordic Valley Drive here be considered mixed use commercial. Okay, if you remember, the street types start with government and institutional, vehicle oriented, commercial, and then they move down uh to where we see mixed use commercial here. So we don't anticipate mixed or vehicle oriented commercial in this village. We don't foresee there being those types of uses. We see this as being more of a quaint uh walkable village core that is more resort oriented, uh more pedestrian oriented than a vehicle oriented village such as Newtown. Okay, so what we're showing here, we should we show these roundabout nodes in these black circles with green centers, mixed use commercial in red, which again allows for street level commercial with mixed use above, so that could be office space above or residential above. And then we start to radiate out from that core. So when you start to look and zoom out from there, we start with mixed use commercial, we go to multifamily, we go to large lot residential, medium, sorry, small lot, medium lot, large lot, uh rural residential and estate lot. Okay, what you see in green is is open space. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a transect from more dense to rural. We start with the intensity at this intersection, and then we radiate out from there. But as a whole, you'll notice that the street types that are that are shown here shows that everything will have a slight increase in density. It's kind of like the tide raises all ships. Going back to the general plan, this node was identified as a village core, where we could bring density in and bring up that density throughout the village. The street regulating plan provides for the implementation of where that density would go and what form that density will take when and if the developer were to want to develop along one of these street types. Okay, the difference between solid lines and dash lines and the solid lines exist today. Those are streets that exist if you were to go out there right now. The dash lines are hypotheticals. There there are opportunities for good connections. They don't exist. They won't exist until a landowner in that area requests to be zoned to a form based zone and wants to develop something in the way of this this style. But I do want to be absolutely clear, this map does not rezone any property. It is simply a framework for a hypothetical feature when and if a property owner wants to be rezoned to the form based village zone. Okay, there is, there is some confusion that this is a zoning map. It's not. It's a street regulating plan, but if you wanted to It's a street regulating plan, but if you wanted to rezone to the form based village classification, you would take this form as the hypothetical future. You guys have any questions initially on the street regulating? I suspect a lot of the public have seen this and are concerned about the color of the street in front of their property. And to them, I want to make sure they understand, should this be adopted in any form that it the final form that it takes does not obligate them to any sort of a street requirement or a street improvements, doesn't rezone them. It's only when and if they, as the property owners want to come to us and request to be rezoned. And so. Again, this is a hypothetical framework for the future, when and if the density is transferred from outside of the village area into the village area. The owners of the land, individual landowners would have to go secure those development rights and bring them in. If, let's say hypothetically, an owner along Nordic Valley Way wanted to redevelop, he wanted to be zoned to this classification, redeveloped to this large lot residential street type. They could request a rezone, but that doesn't entitle them to any new density. They have to go and take that density from elsewhere and bring it in. That is the the direct implementation of the general plan principles.
It's not with that, when they do that, it still requires the same approval processes of rezone, correct?
Correct, it is a legislative action, they would have to request a rezone, come to the planning commission and the county commission before that could be approved. Again, I'm staying a little bit superficial here, I know there's very finite details on here we can discuss, but we want to show we're adding a Nordic specific street regulating plan, similar to Newtown, Old Town, even if it's come before this. And I want to get to the rest of the document before we go through in more detail. Okay, next page is just a slightly zoomed in image here. They have parking standards. That are unchanged. Although the red line did not catch this particular change.
Quite a bit changes, Scott, that are not showing up on here.
I might have changed my, yeah, sorry. I thought that looked strange, there we go. Okay. Okay, thank you. So zooming in a little bit here, so it's actually legible, this is Nordic specific requested amendment to street parking, or sorry, parking lots in general. So each application for development shall include a parking plan that demonstrates sufficient parking will be provided by the street parking adjacent to the building or an off-street parking lot within one thousand feet of the building. With exception to seasonal day skiing parking lots, that was a request from the applicant that we exempt the style of parking lots from the requirement to have hard surface asphalt or concrete. Now that might be a point of discussion, but that was a requested change that may be necessary for those types of parking lots, day skiing, seasonal. If it differs from day season or day skiing or seasonal parking, then the requirement would not allow for them to remain on hard surface, or not on hard surface. Okay, this next section, we've added in a little bit more clarification, some of these mixed use commercial buildings, we anticipate at some point having parking structures. We want to make sure those parking structures are designed to where they don't look so obvious as a parking structure. I'm going to try to keep them as blended in as possible, this language speaks to that. So this is specific to street types, vehicle oriented, commercial, mixed use commercial, multifamily commercial. If there's a parking structure, we want to make sure that first floor is available for commercial space along the street frontage. But if if it's on a corner lot, you know, that corner wraps around and we still have the desire to have street facing commercial that talks about what happens on that opposite corner. If the if the corner that we desire the commercial to be on versus the opposite corner. Yeah, I'm trying not to go too. Okay, cross access and and cross access easements, this language is actually existing language ported over from the other commercial zoning ordinances, when we have use, the commercial uses side by side on the street. We want to make sure there's adequate access between those properties and there's easements that exist for people to get from one property to the next. Instead of having to go out on the street and then turn into the next property. So think about connected parking lots and connected pathways and those types of things. This language was preexisting, we brought it over into this this proposal. Again, this this list is also associated with the cross access and cross access requirements. Okay, this section is the section that was cut from above in the special regulations portion of the proposal and pasted down here as its own standalone section. This section is more specific to the transfer of density, how does that process work? We know that if you are zoned or request to be zoned to the form based village zoning classification, your density doesn't automatically increase. The only way that we are allowed to increase the density on a parcel is to take it from elsewhere and transfer it on. But this particular section speaks to that process, how do we identify how much the parcel had as far as its base density upon rezone? Where we say, how many acres do you have in the existing classification and how many density rights do you have before you are rezoned? Because what we're what we're defining here is, let's say you own three acres in the current FB3 zoning area, you have one density right, you say, I want to reason to the form based village zone. We'll see, okay, when they calculate that your base density is, you have three acres in the FB3 zone, you have one density right. From there, you need to transfer more density in in order to develop something more intensive. Okay. Okay, bear with me as I read through this a little bit. Density allowance and transferable development rates is provided in the Argent Valley general plan. Depression of dwelling units in the form based village zone shall not create any new density in the Argent Valley planning area unless otherwise provided in this land use code. And we're talking about what is to come below. To establish residential dwelling unit rights that exist on a lotter parcel in the form based village zone, or to increase or decrease residential dwelling unit rights on a lotter parcel in the FDB zone, the following apply. So if you want to add or remove density, this is what needs. Okay, for a lotter parcel rezoned to the form based zone from a zone that allows residential dwelling units, the base density as defined in Title 101, Chapter 2, shall be the same as the density that was allocated to allocated in the prior zone. This shall be documented by recording a covenant to the lotter parcel that provides a calculation of the base density. The covenant shall run with the land and be between the owner and the county. So we do, we do a calculation, how many acres do you have in the existing zone prior to being reasoned? That's your base density, that's what you start off. Okay, from there, additional residential dwelling units are permitted on any lot that has street frontage on or gains primary access from any street type in the street regulating plan, except the rural residential street in a general open space street. However, no new density is allowed unless the landowner has successfully negotiated the reallocation of an equal number of dwelling unit rights from another lotter parcel. It has an available dwelling unit right as determined by the lotter parcel's base density and adjusted for any previous dwelling unit rate reduction or addition. The allocation shall be made by recording a covenant to each affected lotter parcel. Each covenant shall run with the land and be between the owner and the county. Each covenant shall document the applicable lot or parcels calculated based density. The number of dwelling units already developed from a lot or parcel, the number of dwelling unit rights subtracted from or added to the base density by any means, and the number of dwelling unit rights remaining remaining for the lotter parcel. Again, this goes back to identifying where are these rights available and transferring them over. It spells out the process by which we account for those dwelling unit rights being deducted from one parcel and added to another. But that your base density is what it is upon rezone, and the only way to get more density is to bring it over from from elsewhere. Okay, this next paragraph dictates where these can come from. So residential dwelling unit rights may be transferred to a lotter parcel in the FDB zone from any lotter parcel in the following zones within the Argent Valley planning area. Are you fifteen, are you twenty, eighty-three, F5, F3, S1, FR1, FR3, RMH1-6, CDR1, and FDB?
Scott, thank you. On this, would you mind pulling the map and showing where is it that these density units would be pulled from?
Yes, absolutely. So we had this discussion with the planning commission not too long ago on a separate but slightly related topic regarding accessory dwelling units. Okay, we wanted to be clear as to where we're pulling these rights from. Yeah, we were concerned about some of these rights being pulled from the Argent Canyon, the hinterlands, and the F10, F40 zones up in the the back country. We wanted to make sure that the dwelling unit rights were coming from the valley. And so we tried to delineate the valley floor using these zoning classifications that I had just mentioned. And when you look at the existing zone, you'll see that these classifications very closely reflect what is the valley floor, before we get too high up on on the benches. Okay, so eighty-three. F5 is about as high up as it goes on on the benches. But by and large, if you look at this list and compare it to the zoning map, it really is that valley floor area we've tried to delineate as being available for transfer. Okay, we don't want density coming from up in the F40, down in the canyon, or some of those far flung areas, we really do want these rights to be coming from the valley floor where we've identified areas that need to be protected. Does that answer your question, Chairman? Okay. Okay, this this next paragraph is talking about the upper boundary of what actually can be transferred into an area. So regardless of number of residential dwelling unit rights transferred to a lotter parcel in the form based village zone, the number of dwelling units actually constructed shall be limited by what can be constructed given compliance with the standards of this chapter. So if you have, you know, parcel in the village zone, you can't just bank a whole bunch of these rights and expect to utilize them on that parcel. You still have height limits, you still have setbacks, you still have those natural, you know, that building envelope you got to stay within. Okay. And then number five, we added a dwelling unit, or sorry, a dwelling or dwelling unit specifically devoted to the housing of employees working in the local service industry and earning less than eighty percent of the county's median household income does not count toward density allowances and are not required to be established through transferable development rights. What we're saying here is if you want to build moderate income housing that matches that requirement of being for employees who work locally and make less than eighty percent of the county's median household income, then you can do those without having to utilize any of your density rights. This particular language is an attempt to implement some of the strategies of a moderate income housing element of the general plan. Talking a little bit more about this, those who've been following the state legislature know we've been getting a lot of pressure to not only implement a moderate income housing element to the general plan, but actually execute on its goals and policies. There are some requirements that have been changing, especially through this legislative session that make it even more important that we take a close look at this. With any land use proposal that we receive, we take this into consideration. We felt that this was an opportunity to find a way to incentivize these units to actually be created without dangling a carrot that just will never come to realization. Now, something else to consider, we've drafted this in its current form, but something that could be considered by the planning commission is not only giving them the free density, but perhaps giving them a bonus. If, for example, they were to develop one of these housing units, you would give them one free density right to to develop another. So not only just saying that they're free, but if you build one, we'll give you one back and you can sell at market rate. Now, the astute will know, the general plan says no bonus density. Unless there's something that will substantially advance the general plan's intents and purposes. We feel like this may be one where we can advance those purposes and grant a bonus. Been talking so much in my breath. Okay, that's that's the end of the proposal, I know we kind of superficially went through this top to bottom, I wanted to get it out there, people understand the form, the function, generally what's proposed. Now, there's a lot of specific details I'm sure the public will get into. But do you guys have any questions about framework, what we're adding or proposing to add?
Just one clarification.
Yep.
This is not forcing people into rezoning their property, it's giving them the opportunity to rezone if they choose to.
Running if they desire to.
Yeah, it's not any specific person, it's this zone, it's just the zone, correct?
Correct, the area that is shown on the street regulating plan, those are the properties that have the opportunity to bring density in. But only if they develop in a form and function that matches this design intent.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question, maybe we would need the county assessor, but so if your street in front of your home now has the potential to have higher density, how will that impact with tax laws, your highest and best use? So I would assume their tax taxes could go up.
When and if they choose to rezone.
So this this, we approve this, that street isn't automatically that?
That's correct. It guides us, it tells us what we should apply if they request the rezone. This is just the regulatory framework within which we would like to see that development occur if they choose to.
Okay, but there again, I thought state law, even though if I have agricultural, I don't want to put apartments, but I have the ability to, that I would still be taxed on the highest. There would be, yeah, best use, so wouldn't that still apply?
Their zoning would not apply until they ask for it to apply. This this regulatory framework has no bearing on the value of your property unless unless you change it.
It's it's very similar to as if you wanted to change your zoning to one acre.
I could maybe do it commercial, but I haven't done it commercially yet, so they're not going to charge.
One thing that came up in the comments, I saw flash up on Zoom. An individual asked if this transfer of density means that nobody out in the the valley floor can realize their density where it lies. That's not the case. If you own six acres out in the valley floor, outside of one of these village areas, you can still subdivide that and put a house on an extra three acres. Nothing about this says you can't realize the density where it occurs. We're trying to create a framework that incentivizes them to transfer it in.
Sorry, I covered diving, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure it was it was clear on the record, I just disabled the chat function, I didn't realize the chat function was going on. But in the same vein as not having signs in the audience, we shouldn't have the chat function going. We should invite everyone to speak during public hearing, and we can capture their comments at that time. But any kind of communication with the planning commission, except for during the hearing period, it's just not appropriate for the meeting. I apologize to those online who like that chat.
Thank you, Cortland.
I just want to make sure it's clear that if this is enacted as a zone, we cannot, we meaning the county cannot promise that the rezone won't occur until the property owner requests it. It will be imposed as a zone that exists, and then going forward in the future, the rezone procedure would be equivalent for moving to this zone and any others known that somebody might want to rezone to. But that also means ultimately it's the county commission that has the discretion to do that. So if the county commission chooses to rezone any parcel in the county, whether it's to the form based village zone or any other zone, it would follow the same process at that point. So if the county commission chooses to rezone property, they're the ones who have that discretion to do that. It's not, and that would follow the normal rezone process. We should be careful not to say if a property owner doesn't request it, it's never going to be rezone, that's not true.
That's that's, and just so everybody's aware.
That's that's and just so everybody's aware, I didn't ask, but Cortland is the county attorney.
I'm not the elected county attorney.
Okay, you're the, you're our representative, I guess, from the attorney's office.
Sorry for bustling up here. I just want to make sure this doesn't become a point of contention. Mr. Cor- uh, Mr. Erickson. Do you know how often or how many times the county commission has rezone property to a zone against the property owners' will?
No, I have no idea and I'm not saying that will happen. I'm just saying. We need to be careful not to pretend that we are the ones saying the county commission will never do this.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the the clarification on that. Um, I've been here since week fourteen and there was one instance in the Western Weaver area. That a property was rezoned to a zone uh, without the property owner's knowledge. As soon as the county commissioners exist and government commissioners were aware of that. Um, that the zone was changed right back to to how it was. So the county commissioners in the current political environment are very sensitive to changing people's zones without their consent. I can see the potential of the CB two zones and all the properties in the CB two zones being rezoned with or without the property owner's consent. Um, just because they already act very similar to the form-based village zone. Um, but I I think that the commissioners will continue to be very sensitive to uh, the politics and 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 the concerns of the county.
Thank you. So if I can briefly recap a little bit till I understand. What we're doing here tonight is we are voting or looking at to not maybe not certain voting, but recommending. Whether or not we create a form-based village zone for Nordic. And we are looking at these changes that you've put forth, the blue and the green, which are wonderful, by the way. I know that we'd asked for that earlier and I very much appreciate your time on this and getting that to us and uh, and laying it out very easily for us to understand what we're trying to do here. Um, we are, we're looking at these things, you know, like we can say, hey, we we don't like that they want to change, to be more artful with the trees. We we want to keep them linear because there's a study that proves it's better. If that's the case, we can, we can make those changes now. Before these are adopted, or for example, the dwelling units and the housing employees, we can make those changes. Um, that's, that's what we're looking at. We're not changing any zoning now.
That's correct. And I do also want to clarify, this this application is applicant-driven. It is not a county-driven application. However, that being said, the county staff would have gotten to this and tackled it on our own in in due time. Like we had mentioned, we already tackled Newtown, Old Town Eden. This was on our to-do list. We simply had an applicant come through the door asking to create a village in this area. Uh, which spurred staff to move quickly on this uh, to uh, to make sure that we. Uh, follow the due process requirements that that applicant is is guaranteed. And that we we look at this. So county staff has been heavily involved in working on this, but it is it is an applicant-driven application.
May I ask, making a, ask another clarif- ask for another clarification, but this would set. This text would set the standard for future. Not just this.
Some some does. Yeah, so the use table is applicable to any street type that is found in any one of the village areas that we create a street. So there are some changes that would be applicable all over, but the majority of the amendments that are proposed are specific to the creation of a Nordic village area.
Question, just so I understand the context we're in. So Nordic is in its whatever zones it's in.
Correct.
Right now. And it's come and said, we'd like to improve our base area. And we'd like, that's what I don't fully understand. We'd like, we have to do this in a resort zone. But we'd like to see an amendment to the resort zone for a small resort zone. And staff at that point said, well, why don't we just do this by expanding the idea of form-based zoning? That we did in Eden, is that correct?
To a point, yes. So when the applicant originally submitted their application, their request was to create an entirely new zoning classification. That they they wanted to call the destination recreation resort zone two. We have a DRR one zone and those are applied to Powder Mountain, Snow Basin. They wanted to create something a little bit smaller, a little bit more quaint and create a new classification entirely for what they wanted to do. And when that came through the door, we said. We have a regulating tool that we've been working on for the past two, almost three years that is intended to advance the general plan. And the village areas that are proposed in the general plan. We've already gone through this process. We've created a framework. We've had direction from the county commission. We don't want to create new zoning classifications. We want to work within what we have. We already have form-based village. It was established for the for the general plan and advancing the general plan. And we saw this as an opportunity to say, let's not create a new classification. Let's create a new village is already intended to be done through this existing framework. And the applicant said, no, that's that that'll work. Let's work through that together.
So what we're doing is taking the elements that would be in this new zone that they proposed. And calling it something else, calling it an expansion of the form-based idea over in Old Town Eden. Because that's what staff would like to see throughout the valley.
That's what's called out in the general plan that we we execute. The the tool was already created to execute that portion of the general plan. So what they provided to us, yes, we did use quite a bit of it. It was custom tailored to a Nordic village within a form-based framework.
Thank you.
That's corrected. That question has already been asked and answered through the general plan process. The question of where do we want this density to be realized? Nordic was circled on the map is was one of those potential locations.
When you get your density rights, how do you? If a guy has twelve acres, he's got four, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's raw ground.
If it's in a three acre zone.
A lot of the times, you've got to put a county road in there to get that and somehow you have eleven acres.
Mm-hmm.
You still have the four density rights because.
If it's realized where you want it to be developed, so if you, let's say you own nine acres, just freezing that. You own nine acres in a three acre zone, you come to us, we say, I want to create three lots. We'd say, okay, show us the subdivision plot. And show us how you're going to provide access to those lots. And we do not count the road right of way in your density. So if you have nine acres, technically you can only get two lots out of that nine acres. That's if the density is realized where it lay. If we're looking at transferring of density, we look at the base density calculation, so it's not as specific.
So technically, we're bringing more density rights in because you wouldn't be able to get that.
In in a way of looking at, yeah, you could look at it that way. But we look at it as is we need to incentivize a landowner to transfer it. If if I say, hey, you've got nine acres, we want you to transfer a couple of those density rights into the village instead of having them here. You'd have to find a financial way to say, it's better off for me to do that. You've got to find a way to incentivize that. If we take every developer and say, okay, you have nine acres, now show us exactly where you're going to realize these three lots. Okay, you got steep slopes, you have a stream, you have some encumbrances, and we're going to take that out. One, that requires somebody to to design a full subdivision on that land before we determine how many units they have to transfer. Uh, nobody's going to go through all the engineering and effort to do that, just to identify if they can transfer that's right. So we've got to find a way to have these landowners incentivized to move their density into the village areas.
Um, but this been appropriate time to talk about some of the things you've added in the different zones, if I have.
The use table. The use table, you mean? We certainly can't like to get into that detail.
Okay, so. In the open space, typically when you think of open space, you think of open space, but there are a number of thing, a number of items that have been. Uh, denoted as permitted uses, uh, I think would be much better. Put in as conditional uses, especially when they're commercial-based, for instance. Ski lodge, catter dog kennels. Um, workforce housing, dude ranches, commercial campgrounds. Because a lot of times those open spaces, but residential properties, already existing residential properties. So to bringing in commercial uses without it being a conditional use is very disconcerting. To me, I think it may be to other people.
Sure. Um, do you have a specific question? Or you, or you think we should not allow any accessory style uses in the open spaces that?
If it's commercial-based, you have, there are several that you've added that are more private, like. Maybe a park, a private park or something, but where it's commercial-based, public use. In a residential area, that's.
Yeah.
Seems quite alarming.
So that that is a good observation. One thing that we were looking at is a lot of the open space that's proposed by this applicant is a ski hill. And ski hills have accessory uses that are simply necessary to operate a ski operation. What what we also considered is a lot coverage ratio associated with open space. So recollect, we took that from twenty percent all the way down to two point five. So there is an upper boundary of how much can be out there, but you know bathrooms, small amenities to make sure that uh, we can operate that open space as intended. Now, open space can be a park, it can be a ski terrain, even parks need bathrooms and pavilions and stuff like that. So some of these smaller accessory uses, we considered as we we probably should have a little bit of that, but not too much. And that's where that lock coverage ratio was reconsidered.
It almost still seems, for instance, um, workforce housing that could be used on that, that you are increasing density.
That's an error. That that was not intended. We apologize. We did not intend to put a P in that column. That will be removed.
Okay, so that's going to be an N in the workforce.
Yeah, we we copied and pasted that line in and we must not have paid enough attention to it.
All right, and then also on um, in recreation, it has the ability. You could have temporary events type things.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if we could add uh, non-motorized to that, especially there, you know, it's an open space. For instance, you know, motocross.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I think in mountain biking and hiking events are okay.
Yeah, I just, the motorized, I I would like to specifically say that it could not be motorized. It, you know, excluding motorized or something.
Did you have a balloon festival?
It temporary recreational.
Well, it's motorized.
Yeah. I'm just wondering how you could get it to get out of having motor cross type events.
Yeah. Charlie's.
Place for everything, right?
Yeah, Charlie's bringing something to my recollection. We had actually put in in a special regulations, this paragraph as. Okay, so in general, all uses listed in the use table are indoor uses unless specifically stated otherwise. All indoor uses shall not generate noise after lighting, vibration, smoke, dust, or any particulate matter. Refuse or any, anything else that is uncommon to the established character of the neighborhood, so as or to such a degree. Has to be perceptible to constitute nuisance to the occupants of the immediate area. This is. This is paved, this is line one fifty-two, page seventeen. So it's kind of a catch-all, trying to make sure everything is indoor unless specifically stated otherwise. Uh, it's one of those nuisance clauses, trying to keep a cap on things that may be unrealized or unconsidered.
Create amusement park, then they, that just by what they put in there, they would not be able to have a.
Uh, no, I think we do need to add a little bit of language in specific to that, but I wanted to point out this language that is trying to put a cap on some of these maybe un. Uh, considered issues that may arise.
So if I may, real quick, just for the audience, with the what, the way we see the rest of the night going away, I do like. We would love to hear from you. We want to get public comment. Um, Shanna just pointed out some of the things that we're going, we're trying to accomplish here. We can make changes to things as permitted. And as it gets, you know, as it gets to where their their motion to table. Recommend for approval and recommend for denial. Um, we can make changes to what we've reviewed here, for example. Like workforce housing, that those kind of things. And we want to hear that, so, but what I want to do is kind of address any of those, those initial concerns. Or things that the commission has. So that way, if there is some public comment on that thing, it's already been addressed or already looked at. So just so everybody knows, as soon as we kind of get through this, we'll, we'll let everybody have a chance to to give their comments.
If I may, real quick, commissioners, um, I I provided you with the public comments that we've received in written form. Through three fifteen this afternoon. That's when I I cut off uh, that uh, that document that I sent to you. I don't anticipate that any of you have read all of those. I wouldn't expect you to. But just so the public understands, any emails that I may have received between three fifteen and now, we have not yet provided to the planning commission. The planning commissioners received public comment through fifteen today, but with such late notice, there's a chance they they did not read all of your comments yet. Okay. And Chair, it might be good to hear from the applicant um, before we go into public hearing, so that they have.
Does the app, where it's a county-led initiative with some input from the applicant, is that that was my kind of concern with that.
Um, typically, we have in the past, it's not that you don't have to, but that's historically been the the procedure.
Okay.
And and to clarify, it is a count, it is, sorry, applicant-led application with heavy county influence, obviously. But it is not a county-initiated application.
Okay, yeah, usually we give the applicant time to respond. Okay. Uh, yes.
We do have the applicant with us tonight. Um, commissioners, if you're ready to to do that.
Um, I think let's, let's make sure there's the commissioners have any other comments first. Do we want to do that? Rick, do we want to do that? Do we, when you said respond, you want them to present now or is that, what what were you kind of referencing there after the?
Yeah, it's up to you. Um, oftentimes, we have the applicant present and then you deliberate as a commission. Then open it to the public hearing because you may have questions for staff or the applicant.
Okay.
Just so that we give the public um, all the information so that they're not blindsided by anything.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's hear from the applicant and uh, I do want to. Um, spread, send some appreciation to the applicant as I've noticed they've had lots of open houses. Um, I I'm told they 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 put, give, they provided opportunities to get public input into what they're, they're looking for. And uh, so I just want to thank them for that and we'll go ahead and let them.
Absolutely.
So they. I noticed the mixed-use commercial and the multifamily residential are are very similar, except for. That, you know, have to or want to put commercial down on the bottom floor, but um. Because they are so similar, I see quite a few permitted uses also in the multifamily residential. That are commercial, that I have some concerns with too, for instance. You know, bars or river folding. It seems like it should be, it would be better placed in the multi.
Really, mixed-use commercial.
That's all, I am just the.
Mixed-use commercial.
Yeah, mixed-use commercial and anyway. For instance, quite a few peas on the food and beverage that like, it seems like that they would be more appropriate.
Yeah, um, to to address the the question real quick, we do see the mixed-use commercial being fairly similar in its. In its design and its massing, its placement on the street as mixed-use commercial, the setbacks are very similar. It's simply the slight difference in the mix of uses more heavily favored towards uh, residential. So there there still can be some commercial on the bottom level, maybe they have the corner market of some sort with mixed use entirely above and behind. Uh, but the the intention was to try to keep them fairly similar, but also start to believe that mixed-use commercial into multifamily. And then diminish the the intensity through the other street types from there. But if if there is a concern or a desire to adjust that slightly, we can certainly talk about it.
So ahead of what what Scott said, um, think about this through uh, market forces as well. What we've been noticing as we're looking at, for example, the uh, CVR one zone requires a ten percent commercial component. In order to do any kind of residential, uh, we can't seem to get that commercial component to even get executed at all. In fact, most, most of the developers just want to do it all residential because they could pack that residential in uh, and multifamily that's eventual towards it. And so one of the reasons why we weren't too concerned about it is because we we thought this would regulate itself. Um, it's hard to get that commercial space even filled up. Um, in those multifamily residential areas, whereas uh, making this a requirement. For example, in the mixed-use commercial areas, I've got my own concerns with that because you put too much commercial down there on the ground floor along these. Streets without enough residential, you're just going to have empty storefronts. And so, I mean, kind of it's. And so, I mean, kind of some balancing of interest there. It's one of the market forces perspective.
I want one comment, suggestion maybe. But we've got a, i- if we go from the macro to the micro. It seems to me we're going to be in the weeds a long time. All the different uses in all the different things in this new tool. But. I'm guessing the public is not here to be in the weeds there and Nordic wants to expand and. Kind of what do they have in mind and what's it going to look like? So if we go from the general. Hear from the public. To just be aware of their concern because they have them and. And they see things that we don't see. Then as we get into the micro. Into the weeds, we'll have a little bitter background to consider whether this ought to be in disuse or it ought to be permitted or excluded or conditional.
Sure. Um, chairman, to be fair to the applicant, I believe they were more prepared to speak to the rezone applications a little more specific to their land. As I mentioned, the staff was very involved in the text amendment. It was initiated by the applicant, but it is heavily staff. Uh, influenced, uh, so any presentation by the applicant is likely to be more addressed to the rezone, which is the work section item. But they're welcome, obviously, to speak to the text as they did initiate it.
Well, they would like to speak to the text amendment.
Thank you, Eric Langbart, Langbart Design Group, uh, land planner and owner of that company. I've also got. Representative from Skyline Mountain Base here. Um, we're not going to take a lot of time into public stations to to comment. I just want to point out a few things that I think. Apply to this. We're here. We're thankful for your time, everybody's time here. The last nine months, uh, we've been working through this process, uh, through the D R R two application and now. Working through the general plan directive and objectives to to create this village at Nordic. I think we've held five public meetings. I think we had a work session with with this group via Zoom. You know, so I think we've listened. Heard, but that's mostly what we're here to do on this this issue tonight. Couple of things I just want to reiterate because I think you'll probably get a lot of comments on the rezone item that's probably more directed to the plan. But I want to want everybody to understand is we're not asking for more distance. And we've said this in every meeting we've had. We're looking for the guidance here to form and shape the density that our current zoning already allows us to do. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. We're taking the density that we're currently allowed to do and putting it into this village format in a way that the general plan. Is has guided and is directed us to do. So that's that's really our big focus. We're here to to listen to the details. I'm not going to spend any more of your time and look forward to. See in the comments. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more comments or questions for staff?
John, can you hear us? Any questions? Commissioner Lewis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I can hear you.
Okay. With that, um, we'll go ahead and open it up to the uh, to the public for some comments. Want to. Everybody to state their name and address when they come up. I want to let you know that the time limit will be for two minutes. If there's someone speaking for a committee. We will allow four minutes. If you feel that you need more than than a lot of time, um, you must ask at the beginning. Please keep your statements orderly. There'll be, we're under county code and ordinance. We won't allow. A cheering signs clapping has been has been mentioned. Two minutes max. We're going to try and cut that off. And keep it, keep it straight, um, straight to that to respect everybody's time and comments. We would like to see facts and new information, additional information. So if something that's already been said. Uh, you're you're you agree with, you'd like to see, we we would like to ask that you not come and and reiterate that point. Um, I don't know that it's appropriate. Maybe, Rick, we could, I'm I'm thinking we might try that if you agree with somebody and you just want to raise your hand quietly, we could. At least get a visual that you might agree with what that person said. If that gets out of hand, we're going to kind of, we're going to cut that off too, please. So. Um, but that way we can kind of get an idea and you're able to express, you know, hey, I agree with this and and we don't have to to rehear some of the same statements. With that, we'll go ahead. You have comments?
Yes, I I see a hand raised already online. So do you want to maybe take comments from the audience first and then address those online or how you want to do that?
Um, let's take a couple from the audience and then we might pause and take some from online.
Chair, before we take any public comment, we need to open the public hearing with a motion. And then once you're ready to close the public hearing, we need to do that with a motion. So it needs to be voted on and then seconded.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move that we open the public here.
Second that.
All in favor? All right. We are now at a public meeting. Um, if you'll line up in the middle here for your comments and we'll. There. Remember, two minutes, state your name and an address.
Hi, my name is Joanna Drube. I live at thirty-four forty-nine Viking Drive. Thanks for taking the time to listen to us tonight and and also explain a lot of things to us. I just hope that because the red line was not posted in the staff report that you'll delay your decision so that we can look at that carefully. I I think the form-based village zoning ordinance will be the rules that govern. The Nordic development. So it is really important and we did try to really look at the staff report. I looked at the nine items called out. Um, and I thought about the implications of those. I didn't know what else was uh, was uh. Being amended and I think a big one is the workforce housing, which I don't oppose, but it's a big thing that people should think about. Um, so I I hope that the red line will be posted and and people have more chance to submit written comments at least. On the height restriction, I understand, uh, I believe that the idea is to go up from fifty to fifty-five because. Of certain architectural elements in the Nordic style and maybe also because of the requirement for. Maybe was it ground floor? Yeah, you could also go down to forty-five. You don't have to go up to fifty-five to accommodate those things. Sorry. And I think that if you're really going to go up to fifty-five, it'd be great to see. An animated fly-through of what that's going to look like, representing the proposed building heights and setbacks. Because this can be a really big change, so it would be really nice to see some visual documentation of what that's going to look like. I think a really, really big part of these amendments are. Uh, under density rights where we say shall be the same as the density that was allowed in the prior zone. I think Commissioner Montgomery makes a good point. Um, to me, that's not. Uh, I have nine acres on a hillside and so I have three uh, development rights, I think. Rights of way, uh, road rights of ways, steep slopes and waterways need to be deducted.
Thank you.
He's getting set up here. Um, my name is, we were thirty-seven one Viking Drive. And also like to say that I'm a professional engineer.
I need to remind everybody that anything added, any papers is going to have to be left and as a part of the public record.
Yeah, and I'll be sure to provide this digitally to our administration here and I'll email that forward to you guys as part of the public comments.
I like to bank hold on. I do respect this area. And if possible, I'll try to do this in two, but if I could get four, I'm I I have representing so. It's not shifting here. Okay, so. Um, my first thing I like to to bring up is the proposal, the text amendment about the employee housing. I'm all for low-income employee housing, think the valley needs it. Um, but the way that it's written, um, it doesn't go against the allowable density. This creates a new unnecessary loophole, in my opinion. Where unlimited play housing could be constructed. I could see a scenario where Powder Mountain could want to put their employee housing at Nordic Valley as well. Uh, for the furthermore, this could have been built in the open space. I think they're going to correct that. They mentioned that earlier. Also, on the height allowances, fifty-five feet, um, I'm not necessarily a a poser that completely, but I think you need to understand that the way. The rules are written, um, there aren't any setbacks for those large buildings. And depending on how the future road plan works, it works out, excuse me. Um, you could have large buildings right next to residential lots, even as it's currently proposed. I think this clause should be rejected or tabled until setbacks are established. Um, I used an engineering grade inclinometer and range finder to go out and measure some buildings around the valley, presented this in two thousand fourteen as well. That's a forty-three foot building right there. That's, I believe, Moose Hollow, sixty-one feet from the parking, fifty-two up above. This is the fifty-two foot building in, I believe, Heber. The hotel here. The barn's about seventy-two feet above the road right there. So if we're talking about fifty-five feet, when you're driving down the road next to that car, the building's going to be just twenty feet below the top of that red line. The power lines are thirty-five feet, so I superimposed. Of a a building, remember, it's going to step back the hill. So as it goes up the hillside, it's going to get taller than five feet. That's what the building in two thousand fourteen could have looked like from the road. Another thirty-five, uh, thirty-three foot view looking down towards Nordic Valley. And again, the building that was presented in two thousand fourteen, that was shorter than what's being proposed now. Also, I want to point out that in the staff report for this text-based amendment, they talk about proportionally decreasing density in other areas. But what I see is three villages. The three villages are not all condensed into one like it talks about in the general plan. It's sprawled. The area above Viking Drive, that FBB zone is larger than the dense area at the bottom they're proposing. I don't see any reason for that additional FBV zone at all. And there's that third one up in the upper corner. They show it connected, but it's actually disconnected by the ski area. The third zone in the the north end there, and I don't think that we should have all three of those FBB. Keep them at the other zoning if they need to do. Uh, houses there, but I don't think that's necessary at all. And the village talks about being a quarter-mile radius. It's one point two miles, sorry, from one end to the other end of the villages. As the proposed, so it's not going to be walkable. It doesn't meet the intent of the general plan. Some other things that they recommended here, um, says. You know, these are supported by the general plan and these changes will enhance the general health and welfare of the county residents. Um, if it meets the general plan, why does it need to be rezoned? I've had several several neighbors and residents ask that same question. The proposing zone creates sprawl all around the existing Nordic Valley neighborhood rather than consolidating at the base of the scary for the general plan. It's already zoned for that. To have that the base area. The proposed proposed changes will be detrimental to the residents of the Nordic Valley neighborhood. Fifty-five-foot buildings without setbacks will destroy the character of our area. The text amendment should be rejected or tabled and considered together with the rezone application. Further work is needed to provide protections to existing residents that provides an umbrella. Over any master development plans proposed by the current or future developers. As written, the stroke of a pen, which I mean that the street planning that they talk about. Stroke of a pen there could allow natural forest and open space at the heart of Nordic Valley to be replaced with large. Incompatible fifty-five-foot structures anywhere in the zone. And it allows uncontrolled construction of low-income housing. Form-based village zoning does not seem like the right fit for Nordic Valley. It's already zoned for a modest-sized village at the base area. If this land is rezoned to FBB, the land, the value of the land will increase. The owners will likely sell to another developer, bail. I know Dear Valley, Dear Valley bid on this back in two thousand six or whenever it was bankrupt by by Wolf Mountain. Well, um, these other people have different visions and a different master plan. Without restrictions, this could destroy the character of this unique area. The very last thing, and I'll make this short. I was here in two thousand six presenting to you guys on rezoning at the time when it was Wolf Mountain. The document on the left is the density calculations provided by the then-owner Wolf Creek. Properties, they came up with a completely different number for density calculations. The only difference in the parcels, and I showed these two, is about point seven acres. So it's the same exact parcels. They came up with four hundred and forty-one total units, including bonus densities. The proposal to now in twenty twenty-two is seven hundred and sixty-three units. We need to see those calculations. I took two days off of work this week, last week and this week to to check these numbers. I cannot get these numbers no matter how I run it. And then without the bonus densities, they only had three hundred eighty-two, which is suspiciously half of the seven hundred sixty-three. Not going to go there. They're also proposing to take hotel rooms. And instead of using half of a unit for a hotel room, they're proposing to make it point three-three units. So that gets them more hotel rooms. They want to take condominium uses, units and use half of a unit for one condominium. So they get double the condominium units. The commercial square footage and all the workforce density housing does not count towards this density. These are major things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very quickly, I'm Jan Fulmer. Um, I had a lot of blood, sweat and tears in helping develop the Ogden Valley general plan. I was one of the people that volunteered wisely or not wisely. But it was a great experience and I do support the village concept, which is throughout that plan. However, when I looked at what you're doing with this form-based village zone. Please, no bonus development units. That's going to blow the threshold of the build-out of the entire valley. We need to have sustainable development, not do uncontrolled increase in development. Also, if you're going to set aside certain units that require no transfer of development units because it's for. Workers or people who are at eighty percent of the median, there's no limit on that. How do you control that? Do you ask the developer, oh, are you going to make sure whoever comes here is only at eighty percent of the median? Doubt that's going to happen. So please, this has got to be reconsidered. You've got to go back and consider what's in that Ogden Valley general plan. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Robbie Coons. I live at live at two five five seven north, thirty-seven fifty east. That's in Nordic Valley. I want to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak today. I really want to know why we're considering a park-city-sized village. At the smallest ski resort in Utah, when both the Ogden Valley Plan. And Mr. Joffrey himself stated that our goal is a small boutique village. I'm wondering if this is more about need or greed when we're looking at a village of this size. The Ogden Valley Plan states its goals and visions that land uses in Ogden Valley should complement, not overwhelm or compete with. The rural rural character of the valley. In the vision statement, we state that the rural rural character of the Ogden Valley by its open fields. Agriculture land, stands of trees, peace and quiet, dark skies, clean air, water, abundant life and small villages. We're speaking about small villages, boutique villages and open fields. I looked a little deeper into what a small village might look like and I I sent this into Scott Park. So I don't know if you have a copy of it. I looked at Eagle Point. Solitude Ski Resort, Sundance Ski Resort. And Grand Targi. These are all villages that have been developed at the base of these ski resorts. Their Nordic Valley Village is between fourfold and tenfold larger than any of these four. If you look. At ski solitude, most of us are probably skied at. They have two hundred and nineteen residential units. They have forty-six hotel rooms. If you calculate the residential units per acreage, it looks even worse.
Please wrap it.
The bottom line is this village is far, far larger than a boutique or a small village. It's far, far larger than any other village than Park City.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Karen Noel. We live at fifty-four ninety Holly Court in Ogden. But we've had a cabin up in us. The valley for thirty-five years. And so we've loved it and we we know the valley well. I haven't read all of the information. But I haven't heard anything mentioned about water. And ever almost twice. And every, almost twice a week in the newspaper and the Standard Examiner, we have an article about the drought, about how they're not going to turn our secondary water on until maybe the end of April, or maybe even May. They're telling us not to plant any new trees, not to do any extra gardening. I know that there's farmers that live below us that need water. That's what they do, they farm. So I feel like that's something that needs to be addressed. I also worry about, you talk about building a village, but you don't talk about the roads to the village or the pollution with the trucks that are going to be delivering to the village. I think that's something else that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Felice Quigley. I live, I live at the base of Viking Drive and Nordic Valley Way. I have prepared something in writing with, a follow-up to what Commissioner Francis talked about, the similarities for the mixed-use commercial and the multifamily residential designations, which are, as in all intents and purposes, identically the same, not only for purposes of use, but also for purposes of setbacks, for purposes of minimum lot acreage, which there's none, for purposes of height, it's fifty-five across the board, regardless of its mixed use, or regardless of its multifamily residential. So my paper goes into specificity with respect to that. I would like to bring up the fact that tonight we have heard both from the staff, staffers, Mr. Perks, who spent a long time, I'm sure, on this plan, as well as from the developers, as well as from other people. Everybody is concerned about transferring base density. In the land use definitions in our existing code, there is no definition of base density except when you are going to increase density. There is no existing definition as to what base density is and how it to be calculated now, when the intent is not to increase density into a form-based village. If you read the definitions that are in our land use code, it speaks in terms of net acreage, as determined, as Joanna said, by subtracting roads, by subtracting steep slopes. The definitions also go in to speak of not calculating acreage based upon if there is a greater than thirty percent slope. And in fact, one of the principles that is enumerated in the general plan is to define buildable acreage as in, as precluding anything that is over a thirty percent slope. So I would recommend not to pass the amendment as worded until there is a specific definition created.
Do you have the paper that needs to be left on the record?
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time.
Good evening, my name's Dave Boland, thirty-four sixty-two Viking, Viking. I have a lot of things here that I want to talk about, but I don't want to repeat whatever has been said. One of the issues I had was the MFR and, and small lot residential units that are in this area called Development Area Four. They're very, very close, back across the street from our house, right across the street to a single-family home, and they go from up to four families down to one. It's a very quick cutoff. And I know it's, it's been expressed with form-based zoning, is you want it gradual. We can request somehow, if that can be moved back, graduated somehow, put it in whatever the, the development agreement to be able to do that. That would be one thing. I agree with the workforce housing. Also, the amendment says utilizing, the amendment proposes that the wastewater treatment and disposal facilities be permitted under open space zones. I don't see how that can work, but if you can find up some way that this type of treatment would not be detrimental to the open space, maybe, but otherwise I think it should be strictly, don't use it there in the open space. The fifty-five foot, the height, that, that, that's all the same. The other issue is in section one oh four twenty-two dash nine, parking and internal block access. They say they want to make the asphalt surface requirement to not be available for the seasonal day skiing. If you look at Nordic Valley right now, it's a mud pit without, so, I mean, they have to do something, find something that's either impermeable or semi-permeable that will prevent that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. If you'll give us a minute, we're going to go ahead and take it online. Let's go to, looks like Ron Gleason, he had his hand up first, June, if you wouldn't mind. I'm muting Ron.
Good evening, this is Ron Gleason. Appreciate the opportunity. Like to echo what a couple of people said and ask that you table this decision to allow all of us to dig into some of the more specifics. It was mentioned it took three years to get the form-based zoning codified, trying to make major changes to it in less than a couple of weeks, I think it's rushing it. And please allow more time for staff, for planning commission and public to review this. The max height, please leave it at fifty feet. If you go above what's already in existing zoning such as CVR twos and all that, you're never going to get it back. Every other village is going to want it and then want more. The building standards, again, mountain-type of standards and looks and all that, but again, very, very large windows. And even though the current lighting ordinance doesn't deal with lighting inside of properties, I'm asking what could be done to mitigate the amount of light which is going to escape from these large windows and cause light pollution. A good example is what was done at Moose Hollow, which, again, we don't want to see replicated. A question for staff, if this form-based density is adopted for the Nordic Village area, could you let us know, both planning commission and the public, what is the maximum number of development units that could be put on that zone? Both with existing zoning, but them purchasing development rights and bringing to the zone. It's been mentioned with transferred out rights that more development use could come in. So could you and have you looked at the maximum number of units that would come in? I think it's really important. On the employee housing, I agree with what's been said, but I want to point out that employee housing was granted to Snow Basin, that didn't count against the development units. This is an example, when you
Sorry, Ron. Let's, June, let's give him just one second to wrap it up real quick, Ron. Ron, it looks like you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please, please wrap it up. Your two minutes is, is up.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I don't know what happened.
Try, try. All right, Fred, online?
Good evening, thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate the thorough review that you've done tonight. My question is one and one only, and that is in regards to water use and water consumption. Yeah, my understanding is that the Weaver, Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District is issuing or recommending and perhaps issuing a restriction on, on irrigation water to the point of one day per week for existing landscape in the valley. So for users that moved here and, you know, signed on, invested in their properties, with the understanding that they could have, you know, irrigation water for their properties, that's going to have a severe restriction, even if they have zero escape type of conditions. One day a week is probably going to result in, you know, severe damage to the, to the landscape and, and trees and such. So, you know, my question is, you know, how can you have that type of restriction on people that have already come here and developed under, understood circumstances? And then retroactively impose more restrictions on them while allowing further development and, you know, excessive water use for new development? I think that's just, you know, not responsible, and it's not fair to the people that have already invested here under, understood circumstances before.
Fred?
Okay, I don't see any hands up online, so continue in person.
My name's Bruce Keswick, I live on Viking Drive, Nordic Valley. And I wanted to add something to what Doug had said. I think he covered most of what I wanted to say. However, I wanted you to know, we have been working with the developer as, as resident groups in their meetings. Residents have proposed to the developer that the South Village Development rights be allocated as a conservation easement, such as to the Ogden Valley Land Trust, that would also include the open space west of the proposed South Village Development. We don't want to see the South Village development occur. It would take a lot of costly infrastructure to build that zone, to build a road there. It's very steep, it's right up against houses. We propose if there are wording or things that need to come out of the ordinance that, that was development rights be moved to the north side of the resort, and some of the details there. I'll leave this separately to keep this short. The other concern is, excuse me, expressed by a lot of the neighbors, a lot of Viking is, this brings something like seven, potentially seven hundred and sixty-three STR units to a neighborhood that has two hundred and twenty-five approximately residences. And if you look at the map, you can see that our Viking Drive is a subdivision that runs all along there. We really think that that's excessive to bring that many STRs, especially when the commission, the commissioners haven't yet ruled or come forward with, hold on, I lost my place. We need to be specific guidelines for the, ensure the licensure accountability enforcement. That's still up in the air. So we asked that, that be part of the consideration of the planning here is, who's going to live here? You pointed out earlier, seasonality. This is designed for seasonality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us out tonight. My name's Mandy McLean. I live at thirty-seven thirty-six East Avian Drive. My family is a new homeowner there. We went there in, in Nordic Valley because of the fact that it was rural. We didn't want the hustle and bustle of the, say, larger ski areas. We liked that it was smaller and quaint. We frequent Snow Basin as well as the Nordic Valley pretty much weekly. But we do like that it's small, and that's what brought us there. We don't want to see our water levels suffer. We also know that we continue to take and take from our earth, and it's not giving back to us in the way that we would like with climate change as well as water, water decreasing. So I think that all of these things that have been brought to us tonight should be taken into consideration. And me as a new homeowner, living right next to where all this is going to happen, that's not the appeal that brought me to this area. I could have gone to Park City for that. But anyway, thank you so much for hearing us tonight.
Hi, thank you all for giving me a few minutes. My name's Mike Skroski, I live at Nordic Valley Way. I'm a property butter to the parking lot. I wasn't planning on saying anything, because I agree with pretty much everything everybody said, but the gentleman who spoke about water, I'm a waste engineer. I deal with waste to energy, energy conservation. And over the years, I've spent a lot of time in some very large wastewater treatment plants. One of the big issues that is now becoming, like now, this, right now, hasn't been identified is PFOS, PFOS. It's a pollutant in wastewater and in wastewater treatment sludge and the effluent that comes out of it. The proposal that they're talking about recycling water, it's a very complex thing that someone with a lot of training and a lot of expense has to operate. This PFOS is going to be in the wastewater effluent, they get sprayed up on the land. It's going to come back down into the reservoir, into everybody's secondary water and into your drinking water. There's, there's ways of destroying it. I'm pretty sure they don't have fifty million dollars to spend on a wastewater treatment plant. So I can do more research, share that if you want, but I see Commissioner nodding his head and knew what PFOS was. Please keep that in mind, it's a serious pollutant. It's shutting down farms on the east coast that have been spreading solids on their fields for years, and it's now a hot issue in this, so, thank you.
Hi, my name's Darren Roboski, I live at twenty-eighty, twenty-seven eighty-seven Nordic Valley Drive. A couple of points that I want to, first off, I want to just say thanks for giving us the time and listening to our voices here. Really appreciate and echo everything everyone else has said so far. One thing that I wanted to talk about that I hadn't seen anyone address, I think Nordic Valley is a little bit different than the other communities for the form-based village designation. Mr. Scott Perks, when you were defining that and discussing the form-based village and the vision of the general plan specifically talked about not wanting to create the urban sprawl in the valley, specifically talked about the valley floors and looking across and not wanting to see, see a sea of houses and, and building tops. The current designation, sorry, I'm trying to read my notes from my phone. The current designation of the vast majority of the units is in the Forest Valley Zone One designation at the Nordic Valley Ski Resort, which is low-density residential development to minimize as much as possible impacting the surrounding environment visual appeal. Look up the exact definition. The bottom line is, I cannot envision how that development with the existing resort still being there, taking place in a way that would create an urban sprawl situation that would actually be worse. So I think the Nordic Valley from a visual appeal right now is very beautiful. People comment about it all the time. It has huge economic appeal for those that travel here internationally to Powder Mountain, et cetera. I think it's beautiful, and I, I don't think the existing zoning designations that are allowed would destroy and detract from that. And so I don't think the general plan, that that really, it does meet the intent the same way as the other areas. The other, other point I wanted to make, sorry, I guess I'll cut it short.
My name's Lisa Stratford. We've had a cabin up on twenty-four forty-five Viking Drive for the last fifty-four years. When we first purchased that property, we were told that part of our property that we paid for would be part of the golf course, and that would remain open lands, which is something that we had learned and known all these years. I think it kind of turned out Wolf Creek might have changed that over. But in this meeting tonight, the one thing that I've wondered is, how high does your fire engines reach? What are your ladders? I don't know this answer, but that might be one, something you want to look into just for safety. Thanks.
My name is Matt Clark, I live at thirty-four thirty-eight north twenty-nine hundred east in Liberty. My family has lived there for about a hundred and thirty years. Our big concern is the water. Not sure if this is the time to talk about it, but I represent Spring Mountain Water Company. And as long as we've been monitoring water, both secondary and culinary, we saw a thirty-five percent decrease this fall. And I would like to see the, the data that shows that what they're going to do, number one, that they have enough water to do what they want to do. And number two, that it shows us that it doesn't impact us. Because I don't, I don't think from the scale that they want to put in, there is enough water. Everybody says, oh, there's plenty of water. Well, show me the data, because I'd like to see the data. I also would like to comment on something Charlie said. You know, he really talked about, a lot about family and families, families. He said it, I don't know, four or five times. There's, there's not a whole lot of family involved in jamming everybody in a village. I, I doubt any of you sitting up there would love to, why did you move to the Ogden Valley? To raise your family? Did you want to do it in a village? There's nothing Um, there's nothing quaint about seven hundred and four units. I heard that, I heard that word quaint several times. There's nothing quaint about that. Um, you know, some of us are trying to 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 raise a family. And I just feel like, you know. These villages, if it was a small village, okay, but the size of villages they're talking about. That's not, that's not people moving up there to raise families. That's weekend people. That's not, I mean, there's a reason our junior highs haven't. The numbers haven't gone up in our junior highs over the years. Because it's all weekend people. Do we want to use our resources for these kind of people? Or do we want to use it for people moving to raise families? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I'm Gary Fulmer. I live over in the Highlands and Wolf Creek. Not directly connected here to Nordic, but I'd like to say, I think, point of the meeting tonight. Was really to look at this ordinance proposing and the zoning you're proposing. You've already set up a zone. For Old Town Eden, New Town Eden, and the next one is Nordic Valley, apparently followed by Wolf Creek or whatever the. List was you guys gave, and I really appreciate what you're trying to do. And I think you're trying to set an overall precedent here. For the areas in the plan that were identified as a zone or a village. And I think we should keep our mind and our focus on that. The other issues that have been brought up, a little more specific to Nordic Valley, I think are really for another time and another discussion. What we will look at here is what works. Here in Nordic Valley and can we apply that to Wolf Creek and the other areas? I think there were some very, very valid. Uh, issues raised by. Commissioner Francis, the first individual that got up. Things talking about housing, height limits, uh. How you can increase zoning or density because you bring in. People who earn less than eighty percent of the valley income. I'm I'm not sure how you're going to do that. I would urge the commission tonight to table this. And let's look at this a little bit more specifically. And see if we can't narrow down some of the ramifications. I almost so understand if you pass this, then we are setting limits. And zoning issues to be addressed by the developer at Nordic Valley. I get that part too. But I think there's too many holes in this thing. That we really need to look at. And I would urge you to table this tonight and let's think about this and work on some refining the. Language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For hearing from all of us tonight. My name is Wes Lowbring. I live at nineteen fifty eight North thirty eight fifty East. Up high near the water tank. I know Nordic Valley has declined to provide water for this development. It is way more than twice the number of people that currently live in that neighborhood that would be added to the Nordic area. So the congestion, the air pollution. There's going to presumably be wood burning fireplaces in a lot of these units. The particulates added to our air that our kids are breathing. Kids were playing football or soccer or lacrosse or tennis. They're going to have to deal with. It's a big impact, not just on our neighborhood, but the entire valley. And that density is something that is others have said is something that will set a precedent. If you think of quaint. I'm going to defame an area of town we all drive by. I don't think any of us ever look at the tall condos at youth Holland thinking, hey, they're quaint. When we drive by, it's it's to me. One of the least attractive parts of town. I don't want to offend anyone who lives there. That's what you can, that's what your spot is. That's great. But let's not build more of that. Uh, this, this development is not going to compete with Summit. Not going to compete with what's going on up at Snow Basin, and it doesn't need to. But it's clearly going to have an influence in our neighborhood and in our valley. That I don't think is necessarily going to add to the benefit of the the folks who live here already. I I'm not a, not in my backyard person. If it's thoughtfully done. It has the right kind of density, the right kind of height, the right kind of aesthetic appeal. I'm all for it. Change is going to come. We can't stop it. People have the economic rights in their land. And that big piece of land, which is the old golf course is sitting there like a pile of money. It's burning a hole in somebody's pocket. They want to do something with it. I understand that, but let's make sure we we nudge them in the direction. Of doing something that will benefit the entire valley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Frank Knoll. We, my wife and I have a cabin up in, up in the valley. We, it's right next door to, to Nordic Valley. Uh, I agree with almost everything that's been said here tonight, but I do have a legal question. Um, it seems to me that this legislative system is designed to not increase the density throughout the valley. The net density, is that correct? Um. And the way that it does that is that if a landowner decides to sell his development units to a developer to use those in a village. That he thereafter can't build on that acreage. Um, and the way that that's enforced, it seems to me from from something that you said, Mr. Parks, is that. Uh, it's enforced with a covenant that runs between the landowner and the county. My, my first question, when I heard that was, and what's to prevent the county from not enforcing that? Or from changing their mind? Or from allowing a specific landlord or landowners generally on some future planning commission to go ahead and develop. On their land. So I think that uh. That there's not much teeth in that provision that enforces the net density objective of this legislation. So um, I think that while we're talking about amending the zoning ordinance, maybe we ought to think about some ways to. Put a little more teeth in that so that some, uh, any future commission can just change their mind and allow. Without even a reason. By not enforcing that covenant. Um. We, uh, I'm also concerned about the water. There's been a lot, lots said about that. Uh, Matt Clark is on our water board. And I'm told that every time somebody fills well, our water is diminished. We think that the role of government in all of this is to make sure that any development, which is going to happen. Is done responsibly. And that the interests of those who already live here are protected. Uh, against maybe some of the interests of those people who don't. We understand that there, that there will be.
Thank you.
Hi, Corey Cousins. I live out by. Eastside Huntsville. Um. This isn't affecting me yet, but it sounds like it's going to. Infrastructure's a big deal. We've talked a lot about water. Uh, these guys run up sewer. Uh, I want to know who's going to pay for it. Is it the valley residents? Is it Ogden? Is it Weaver? Who's going to pay for that? Who's going to pay for a sewer line going through that valley? Who's going to pay for the water lines, the gas lines, the electrical? It's us. It's the residents. The developers more than likely push down to us. That's my piece.
Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody lined up here. I don't. See anybody online. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
In a second. Uh, all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Public meeting is now closed. Thank you. Commissioners, any, any comments, questions?
I think we all have a lot of comments and questions, but I think, uh. I think it's our, our obligation to review these red lines a little closer.
Mr. Chairman, before everybody leaves, we've got a number of comments and that we can, and questions that we can answer right here. If you're comfortable doing so.
Yeah, um, if everybody couldn't hear that, we're, we're going to try and address some of the questions that were brought up. Charlie's going to go ahead. And then I think. Probably fair to have the applicant to have a second too. If they would like to address everybody while they would stay, if they would stay for that, appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and and to the public who who came to speak. It's phenomenal. We we hardly ever see this kind of turnout. And sometimes it's, uh, when something happens in your backyard, uh, it takes that to. Is that better? Okay, sometimes it takes a development in your backyard to to get a good turnout, but we're glad to see people here. Um, a lot of comments, very good comments to get through. Um, and uh, I don't want to belabor any points, so let me just dive right in and uh, we'll get moving. So concerns that the red lines weren't posted for public review, uh, great concern. And we'll make sure that gets posted to the Frontier website for everyone to look at, um, unless you guys make a motion tonight to uh, move on this item. Um, concerned over height, uh, that's a certain number. Number that Nordic wanted, the Nordic developers wanted. Uh, you can see the changes going from forty five to fifty five. Uh, as staff members were, we're comfortable with whatever you guys are comfortable with on that. Um. Development rights, steep slopes, rights of way, streams, um, et cetera. Uh, I had the, before we did the Ogden Valley General Plan, the twenty sixteen general plan, I had the benefit.
Can we, can we close the doors? We, we listen to everybody's questions. I'd really like to see if we can answer any of them and allow everybody that wants to to hear that, so.
Thanks. So I had the benefit, uh, just before the Ogden Valley General Plan process to go through all of the platted subdivisions in the Ogden Valley. Um, nineteen or from the seventies forward. And run density calculations to figure out where the density is and and what's, what the resulting density can be under existing zone. Um, one of the things that came out of that first off is if we maximized our density, in other words, erased all of the property lines on the existing valley floor. And configured everything to be exactly three acres or, uh, you know, multi-family, twenty units in the acre in the C B R one zone. Or going even going over the F forty zones and doing one dwelling at every forty acres. The total number of dwelling units is upwards of twenty six thousand. Now that's erasing all the property lines and pretending like it's not hard to get to certain properties. Okay, so that's just in a, in an ideal world if the earth was flat. That is what I said. That's what your existing zoning will, it does already entitle landlords. Okay, so another thing that I discovered as I did this study, as I looked at cluster subdivisions versus standard subdivisions. And uh. Prior to, I believe it was twenty fifteen, I think. Prior to twenty fifteen, we allowed bonus densities in cluster subdivisions as an incentive to encourage a developer to create a sub, a cluster subdivision. Uh, the idea behind that was if you cluster everything, you get shorter roads and shorter infrastructure thereby it being less expensive, both for the developer and for the county to operate and maintain. Being less of a cost burden on the tax base. When I ran that study and looked at and added up all the density rights that came out of cluster subdivisions compared to traditional subdivisions. Cluster subdivisions actually had a twenty five percent haircut. Compared to traditional subdivisions. And the reason why, even though they got bonus densities, up to fifty percent bonus densities in some of these cluster subdivisions. The reason I found why clusters took a haircut. Was because traditional subdivisions don't have to consider slopes. They don't have to consider waterways. They don't have to consider, uh, while they do have to consider roads. Okay, so you take your house, you put it on the spot that's easiest to develop, and then you run your lot lines straight up the steep slope. It's not a challenge to do and it happens all the time. And that's why you see in a traditional subdivision, um, context, you see more development going in. Than you do in the cluster subdivision context with bonus densities. After I did that study, that's when I realized that, uh, sometimes against our own best efforts, we don't do ourselves any favors. So if we were to allow that mountainside to develop under the traditional one unit to three acre development rule. The applicant, the owner, whoever the future person is that chooses to do that development is going to maximize their density. Okay, there's only a few developers in the Ogden Valley that don't maximize their density and they do so because it makes more money not to do so. Right? It's not happening very often. So look at the hillside right across from where Nordic is right now. It is being developed. Now, it's not the max. It's not at the max. But it is being developed and they've been able to find ways to cut their roads in. Okay, now think about the roads right now that go up that were, that were cut into that mountainside to install the poles for the ski lifts, for that new ski lift. If you could follow those exact road lines or something similar to that to access any other part of that mountainside where you could put a home. I encourage you to look at the homes in Deer Valley. Go anywhere on the coast of California. Go anywhere with steep slopes where you've got the money, the willpower and the desire. And you'll find homes. That's why when we did our base density calculations for the code, not for this project, but for the code itself. When we defined base density, we didn't include slopes. And we didn't include roads because it's about what can actually be realized on the property. If the landowner is willing to keep their land open and undeveloped. And they've got three, if they got nine acres of land. Let's say they were to develop that, right? Well, they'd have to cut a road in, cut them down to to two units instead of three units. Well, maybe that we can even get those two units off of that. Or maybe all they got to do is is purchase just a sliver of property from a willing seller next door. To to get up to that three units. The people buy and sell land, they adjust the property boundaries all the time to get their maximum. Um, and we see that across the board. That's why we created the lot averaging subdivision. That's why we created the, um, uh, street connectivity subdivision. Because we were finding that folks were trying to avoid installing a street so they could maximize their density. And they're finding every loophole they could to get out of installing a street. And so we created a, an incentive, a development tool to say, all right. If you don't install this street, or if you do install this street, we'll still let you get that max amount. Because you had a nine acre, uh, landowner who could have gotten three, one for himself and his two kids. But because of a road that the community needs for the future. He wouldn't have been able to do that. So he was trying to find ways to get around it. Okay, so. Think about it through that lens a little bit. Um, are they going to develop that mountainside tomorrow? No, but they're not going to develop the face tomorrow either. Okay. So a couple of things to think about when it comes to density. The other thing is I know density is scary. Um, and and I know density is the enemy. Uh, because it is, it is something that's tangible to point a finger at. Uh, but the thing about density that makes it scary and makes it the enemy is its change. And those changes bring impacts and impacts affect people, right? So what are those impacts and how do we keep it from affecting people? I heard water. I heard transportation. I heard pollution and wood, wood burning stoves and 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 vehicle miles traveled. I'm sure there's a number of other impacts as there's visuals as well, visual impacts. That we should be discussing. Because density isn't the problem. It's the impacts that density creates that is the problem. And we need to address those impacts directly. So I encourage the public and I encourage you planning commissioners to think about this from the perspective of what is the impact? And how do we deal with it? Now, I'm not suggesting we give the developer their seven hundred and sixty somewhat, uh, requested rights. Because as Scott and I did the calculation, we didn't get that number either. Okay, but we did get upwards of six hundred. I can't remember what the final number is that we landed on, but, uh, taking their zoning. Dividing it by three or taking their acreage and dividing it by three. They had a few other types of zones in there as well that we had to consider. And that was the number that we came up with. Okay. So. We've got workforce housing that we wanted to, uh, uh, address. I, that's a, it's a challenging one, a very challenging one. We know we need workforce housing. We know we need it. And we need it somewhere in the valley. Otherwise, you're going to have a freeway going through Ogden Canyon in the future. You're going to have to have a freeway going through Ogden Canyon in the future. Think about how many lanes they've added to Harley's. Uh, in in the last twenty years. Okay, workforce housing, you've got to be able to get people, or you got to be able to get people up to the resorts or into the service jobs without having to bring them from Ogden. So where do we put them? Well, I don't want them in my backyard, right? I don't want people who don't make as much as I do in my backyard. I'm just kidding. I live in Ogden right up the hill. I'm one of those workforce housing people. But I get it. I get not wanting to see that, uh, change. Um. One person made a very good comment that, well, what's going to keep Powder Mountain from putting their workforce housing in this village? That's a really good comment and we need to address that and tackle it head on. Because it should be spread out in villages. It shouldn't be concentrated in certain locations. Okay, um, one of the reasons why we put workforce housing as not counting against density is because the concern that I heard is what's going to keep people from doing infinite amounts of workforce housing? The market, the market will, workforce housing does not pay for itself. It doesn't pay for its infrastructure. Okay, so we tried to do moderate income housing, um, in a, in a development here in West. Okay, so we tried to do moderate income housing in a, in a development here in Western Weaver County. And the landowner came to us later on and said, we can't even, we can't even get someone to purchase the land for the value that moderate income housing is, let alone also build a building on there. Construction cost by itself to get a mortgage on the construction cost for a typical home now is way above eighty percent of the moderate income. Family income for the area. And just a quick correction on what moderate household income is. It's not for the valley. It's moderate, it's not eighty percent of the median household income of the, it's eighty percent of the county. And so we're talking about people who earn like sixty, was it forty, forty-eight thousand or less. People who earn, a household that earns forty-eight thousand or less needs to have somewhere to live. Otherwise, your transportation network is gonna be a nightmare in the future. Water, water is a really easy answer. It's also not the answer anybody wants to hear. People need water in order to develop. You cannot get a building permit unless you have water. Okay, so why would we go ahead and do this? Why would the county go ahead and consider new development if there isn't enough water? Well, the fact is, people want to see evidence that there is enough. Others want to see evidence that there isn't, right? So we need to know that there are rights to water and that there's a proven source. That's what the county is responsible for doing. That, that is the county's limit. Where they get the water rights and how they approve their source is the purview of different agencies. You got Weaver Basin that they're gonna have to go through. You've got the state engineer that they're gonna have to go through, the division of water rights, the division of drinking water. Four different agencies that they're gonna have to satisfy. So the purview of water, we know that we're not gonna be issuing any building permits on this. Until we've got state agencies and Weaver Basin signing off on their water sources. The, the comment that sometimes when somebody drills a well, it, it, it brings the water level down on, on other wells, that's true. It does happen sometimes. So the question on whether or not it brings it down below the usable amount of that other well is a question that the state engineer has to answer. When they go to apply for a permit for a water source, because they can't get a water entity in that area to serve them. When they go apply for a permit, the state engineer will evaluate whether or not the drought drawdown on that well affects the other wells in the area. And there's a protest period and a whole process, due process for wells, okay? That due process isn't part of rezoning. That due process is part of wells, well rights and getting well permits, okay? So just trying to help the, the public and yourselves get kind of a sense of comfort that there's this, there are these levels in these hoops, I mean, call it red tape or what you will, to get through the development process. And just because something gets rezoned doesn't mean it's gonna come to fruition. There's a lot that has to happen after that. And one, one way to consider that is the entire valley floor is zoned for sixteen thousand dwelling units. Just the valley floor. That's what the existing zoning can produce if you develop one unit every three acres. But none of those exist right now, right? And we'll approve each of those homes after they've shown us that they can get a water source. So give it just an example of that. Is this too much density for this area? It's another thing that I heard. Maybe, maybe there's subjectivity to that. And that's part of your purview is determining whose purview or whose subjective point of view is the one that will stand. The developer certainly has his point of view. And the person who lives right next door to a fifty-five foot tall hotel has their point of view, right? And they're probably not gonna be the same points of view. And so that's part of the hard, hard parts of your job here. But all opinions have one thing in common, right? I won't finish that analogy, but. Okay, so somebody mentioned, why does the zone have to change if it complies with the master plan? There's a confusion about this and I, I saw a bunch of hands go up in support of that question. There's, there's confusion. The general plan is not zoning and the zoning is not the general plan or the master plan, okay? So the master, the general plan says, this is what we should do if somebody comes in and asks for a rezone. Look to the plan. What does the plan say we should do? Should we rezone? Should we not rezone? What the existing zoning does is just what the existing zone is, okay? So if the plan says do something different than what the existing zoning says, then do something different. Or don't, it's up to you guys. That's, I mean, the plan is here to, to give you, to give you advice on how to make hard decisions like this. Bonuses and moderate income, okay, already addressed all that. Let's see, sorry, forgive me. Benefit of being a community. Okay, concerns about roads to the village, so.
Excuse me, everybody, we, we let everybody speak pretty much uninterrupted. He's trying to answer the questions. And we'd like to hear what he has to say. Thank you.
So the concerns about transportation, roads to the village, pollution, very good concerns and concerns that we're trying to work with the developer on right now. They did provide a transportation study. The transportation study says, by the time you've developed this whole thing, the seven hundred and whatever units that they hope to get. The levels of service on the existing streets are gonna be just fine. I don't know if I'd like that answer. And we have been working with the developer to work towards needed improvements of least along Set Drive. Nordic Valley Road and along thirty-three hundred. We're talking about the potential of a roundabout on Highway one sixty-two as it peels off towards the resort. To try and mitigate that weird why in the road, talking about additional shoulder along Nordic Valley Drive. To provide a little bit better capacity and some safety improvements there. And we're, we're working with the developer to find out how much they can provide. Because this is a legislative action, they're not entitled to approval. You guys can ask for the things that you think are gonna be needed. Knowing that if you ask an upper ceiling that is unaffordable, you know, maybe, maybe they walk away. But transportation is something we should consider. The other thing to take note of is we have an impact fee facilities plan. So Commissioner Francis, you asked this question over email a little bit earlier today. We have an impact fee facilities plan and we have impact fees. Every single one of these commercial units and dwelling units are gonna have to pay an impact fee. And all of those impact fees can go towards providing needed improvements. We've been identified as the valley grows. And we did identify the valley growth at sixteen thousand dwelling units in our plan. We identified as it grows, what improvements are gonna be needed. So improvements at Highway one fifty-eight and Highway one sixty-two, around about in that location. And so all of these, all the impact fees that come out of this development will go directly into that. We've got stormwater, we've got transportation, we've got trails. Sewer, nope, not sewer yet. I'll think of it later. It's, it's none of those things. Okay. Okay, there was a, a comment about thirty percent slopes and no definition of base density. That's, it's not accurate. We have a definition in the, in the county code of what base density is. And any reference to thirty percent slopes, twenty-five percent slopes has been removed, so I'm afraid somebody might be working with old information. And that, those changes happened a few years ago. For the reasons that I've already mentioned. We already ran the analysis. We already determined that traditional subdivisions were just going straight uphill sides and mountain cliffs. And if you were here for the presentation I gave in twenty fourteen, just before we started the general plan process. You'll remember a curly queue driveway that went up to a shelf that somebody installed. I called the developer who actually installed that shared private driveway, go into seven different homes on a, on a shelf on the east bench of Salt Lake County, just down by Little Cockwood Canyon. Instead, he spent like three million dollars just to put that in to get access to those homes. When there's a will, there's a way and when there's money to be earned, there's a way. So there's something to think about there. And I'm not suggesting we should be making anybody money. I'm suggesting that there are market forces, there are economic forces, there are social forces at play that we may not fully understand. And so I just, I think I've said it before, we just gotta be cautious about the way that we push. If it's too much density that we're talking about going into this particular village. But we also know, we've got other villages that can absorb some of the density on the valley floor. So maybe we could set an upper ceiling. I think Mr. Gleason mentioned, what is our, what is our max for this area? We haven't set one. We didn't set one for the, for the Old Town Eden or the Newtown Eden area. We didn't set that limit. We said, if you can transfer everything from the valley floor into these little tiny areas, do it. Because that's what we thought the general plan said. Now, if that's not what the community wants to see from the general plan, then we need to change the general plan. Because the intention of the plan is to try and clear all the units off the valley floor and move them into these areas. So that's disconcerting if you live in one of these areas, because you don't want to see your area grow. It's wonderful if you live out in one of the other areas and you don't have to have neighbors. So unintended consequences of, of, of planning and zoning, for sure. Okay. Sorry, I'm almost done. Waste water being used. Oh, oh, sorry, wastewater treatment in the open spaces, spaced areas. We wouldn't want to see a facility go into an open space area that builds out most of that open space area thereby negating open space, right? In fact, that's why we limited the, the amount of building footprint or building space in the open space area to no more than two point five percent. But you may see a small package treatment facility. If I lived next door, I would say, hell no, I'm not, I don't want pool lagoons in my backyard. They're not planning on doing pool lagoons if they have to. They don't want to do one, a, a, a treatment facility at all. They'd rather spend the money to connect into a community facility. And so there's a study going on right now to try and do that and see what the result is. But worst case scenario, the plan right now for wastewater is to build an indoor, a small indoor building that is a packaged treatment facility. The concern about using that wastewater to make snow and some of the contaminants that are in that, it's a bit of a good concern. And, and some issues that I, I hadn't considered before and I'd like to get some information, more information on. There are other issues involved in reusing that water. Weaver Basin says that we own that water, whether you, whether you reuse it or not. So if you're gonna double dip, you gotta pay for it a second time and you gotta have a contract a second time. And so there may be some logistical issues with you trying to do that. We'll, we'll find out in time. Hard surface in the parking areas, I, I wondered how well that would be received. Versus having temporary non-paved ski lots. I know that what's happening right now on that ski hill has caused some big challenges for the landowner. Landowner is not the resort operator. They're two different entities. But what's happening right now on this field and some of the concerns and problems that's creating for the neighborhood isn't, isn't great. And I think there's been some, but the landowner in a position where he's had to do some damage control. Mr. Fulmer mentioned, he appreciates what he thinks we're trying to do, which is trying to keep things consistent across villages. I suspect, and I could be wrong, it could be underestimating. But I suspect if we came to you with a village zone for this area without a rezone application by the resort. There probably wouldn't be very many people here, because we're talking about trying to keep villages consistent. We're actually trying to create a tool that takes less staff resources to implement in time. If you've got the Snow Basin Development Agreement, the Nordic Development Agreement, the Powder Mountain Development Agreement. And then every Wolf Creek Development Agreement and everything in between, you're gonna need to pay a lot of taxes. So you could pay for planning staff to actually interpret and apply those requirements and restrictions. Somebody mentioned, well, how is the government going to enforce covenants, TDR covenants? That same question, it's a legislative question. It's a legislative desire and a public will question. And the exact same question could and should be asked of how are we gonna ensure the government doesn't change its own ever? And we can't. The answer is we can't. Legislative authority under the constitution of the state of Utah has the ability to make these changes with or without the public, the public's consent. Now, the public has the ability to reelect new officials. So the democratic process has to unfold in that. The benefit however, is the legislative intent of recording a covenant that says thou shalt not develop these units that you've transferred from your property. That'll be like a tablet, stone tablet like Moses, thou shalt not. The benefit of having that there is it'll always be on the record. We're gonna always be able to track it. We're gonna map it just like it's a new zone. And so we'll know that it's there. Now sometime in the future, if you get a, a landowner who petitions the county commissioners to remove that restriction from their property. It's count through three votes right now. That's all it takes. It's possible. But it's the same possibility just to get their land rezoned to a completely different zone and upzone them to put ten thousand units on it, right? So the same concern is there either way. There's no benefit or protection from future changes. With burning stoves is a concern. I don't, I can't, I don't recall whether or not we've, we're in an attainment area in the Ogden Valley. I know we are down here and we're not supposed to be burning wood down here. We'll look into that. I think it's a really good concern, because even if the upper valley is allowed. There, there are some non-conforming buildings that don't have gas fireplaces or gas heating that are still allowed to burn. But other than those, I don't know how the regulations affect the Ogden Valley. So we'll check on that. And if we need to put it in the code, no wood burning fireplaces in new construction or new commercial construction, however we do it, let's do it.
Charlie, I think Ron Gleason mentioned something about dark skies.
Yes, thank you. That's actually a really good concern. I wanted to make sure I hit that. Thank you for bringing that up. We discussed when we did the dark sky ordinance a few years back. We discussed the possibility of dealing with these gigantic chandeliers right in a big picture window that overlooks the valley and the light that it casts. Because there are quite a few of them. You can find a few residential developments with some very beautiful homes that they, they like to announce that their home is beautiful to everybody who can see it. Anyone who drives by. There is a concern with light coming from inside the home, going outside the home and affecting the night sky. So far, we haven't had the ability to get the county commissioners to modify the ordinance to say we will regulate that. But we did talk about it during that ordinance development process. It was written and we removed it based on political will. So it always, it's always worth a conversation, because we've got a new thing coming in. And maybe it's a new zone restriction that talks about some different dark sky requirements above and beyond what's typically required. Last, last statement I think was who's gonna pay for the, the sewer and water and, and all the other infrastructure? The answer to that question is the developer, absolutely the developer. We won't allow development to go in unless they're paying for the infrastructure. So when it comes to gas and electricity, they have to have a private contract with Dominion Energy and with Rockin Mountain Power. To extend whatever facilities or lines they need to serve their, their area. We do have a code that says all of your power lines have to be undergrounded, even existing power lines. So if you see existing power lines running across their property, they're gonna have to pull them under the ground. So you'll see those go away. As far as the roads go. As the, the transportation engineers say that there's enough road infrastructure to get people there for the next twenty years. I just don't know that I agree, because there's a difference between a level of service of a road in terms of how it functions and, and a level of expectation. And the folks who live in the area have an expectation that roads are gonna function the way they're functioning now. And if this was an administrative application, I would tell you, you probably can't do very much. They've already proven that it's not gonna affect the roads beyond. What UDOT says is it should be the level of service of, of different road types. But this is not, it's legislative. So you do have the ability to say, you know what, we need some road improvements and these are the ones that we need. We've already, like I said, already asked the developer to tell us what their offer is for, for those kind of improvements. But the way that that last comment is correct is who's gonna pay for the operations and maintenance of these facilities? And that is the existing and future taxpayer. That includes the Nordic Valley folks. Now, there's one other thing that is being considered and that is to the betterment, I think, of the, of the community. And that is the creation of a public infrastructure district. They're running that through the economic development team right now to see if they can actually create that. What an economic development district does is it creates a, a, up to one percent or one point five percent tax to the property, that specific property, not the other properties in the area. So only the property owners who volunteer to be a part of that. And then that tax, the revenue from that tax can be used to reinvest in infrastructure in that area. And so that, that would be a big benefit, just because it'll be, it'll allow them to not just offset what their actual detriment is based on traffic engineering studies, but offset it based on existing expectations. Were there any comments that you felt needed to be addressed that I didn't address?
Real quick, so about the the units too for the hotels, but it's only counted as. Is that the one that's fifty percent or and then the condos is twenty three, three, or is that do I have it backwards?
So.
So really, when we talk about density, it is a lot higher than even what you're talking about.
The the person who um made that comment, they read the application. They didn't see how that application actually is being applied through the ordinance. We don't have any restrictions like that, restrictions or promises. We're not saying that a condominium is only fifty percent. Um, we have talked about it, but we didn't write it. Uh, so right now condominium is one development.
What about hotel?
We didn't put anything in the code.
We could do that or we could as a planning.
Yep, yep. Now, the reason why the one third came up is because that is what the DRR one zone currently says. That was part of their original application when they wanted to create a DRR two zone. Was they just kind of mirrored what was in the existing DRR one, DRR one, just in case anyone's confused about what that is. Is the resort zoning that Powder Mountain and Snow Basin has. So both Powder Mountain and Snow Basin, they cut into their uh uh residential um. Unit count by one third per hotel. So it takes, yeah, three, sorry, three hotel rooms is one development. All the reasons why we didn't even discuss that wasn't, it it was at first, it was an oversight. We realized a couple of days ago and as Scott and I were chatting, well. You get people in hotels, uh, you're gonna have people on the street, you have people on the street, you have people going to those businesses and patronizing them. So maybe it's not as big of a deal, but I can certainly see how it can be like a big deal to the community and we can, we can certainly address it. Any other questions?
Would the applicant like to make any comments?
Eric Langbart again, Langbart is on group. I think Charlie touched on most of those. Uh, thank you, Charlie. You can tell we've worked closely through this process for uh. I think two or three applications at this point. Not not too close. Uh, you know, really, the conversation tonight, I think, is kind of blending the two applications, quite honestly, which it's understandable. They're they're tied together in the zone. And the uh. Thank you, text amendments late. I just want to touch on a few things, but I think, you know, those those items of traffic and water and sewer. Or or things that are going to be, and even even the density, quite honestly, is is going to be developed in that in that reason on the process. As far as the density goes, I've done the calculations. I think Charlie pointed out there. The way it's calculated now and some of those aspects is quite different than it was uh in the previous. Memos that you've seen for calculations. Uh, we will actually, we continue to work work through those uh those numbers, but I've. I've gone through these and I'm pretty confident in my numbers. There are some things, you know, the CVR one zone that we have today. And in the FR three zone, there are allocations for a unit. And it's burnt by per square foot requirement per unit, but there's also some allocations for lockouts within that. And so when you say density, it it can be a little bit different. The hotel, I think, is a whole nother conversation. Today, it's not counted against your density. Uh, in the CVR one zone, we could go build a hotel today and it could be called commercial, I believe. All we have to do is meet the setback and hide parking requirements and. And like we'd be good to go and not have used any density. That's that's today. If you guys want to put that in there, you know, we're we're open to uh to that discussion, obviously. The other element, I think, that we, you know, the the number here has been thrown out. Let's say it's seven hundred units. When you hear seven hundred units, you think. A unit is a unit is a unit, and it's it's not the case. A condominium. In a four story building, it's two bedrooms, you know, a couple of baths. It's stacked on top of three other ones and next to twenty other ones. It's not the same as a unit on the hillside. It's an eight thousand square foot home. They use a lot less water. They're clearly not taking up the land space. They're stacked. You know, they're they're in this this village setting for a purpose. So when we say seven hundred minutes, we are proposing a number that sounds large, but I think when you look at it. You'll you'll see how it pounds. You know, there was a comment about the three D imagery. You know, I think it's a great idea. We've actually started it. We haven't brought it forward yet because it's quite honestly, we're waiting to see how. How the the process plays out, but it's something that we can do fairly easily that'll show everybody. You know, what what this really looks like, at least on the Nordic village portion of it.
Um, great idea. It was rather popular.
Yeah, well, it's so, I mean, plans are hard to read. I've done it for twenty eight years and I can. I wake up at four in the morning with one in my mind, unfortunately, but it's not something everybody can see. A three D graphic is is really helpful. So we'll we'll plan on bringing that forward. The one last thing I I have to bring this up is, you know, and I think Charlie, you said small is is uh subjective. A small village, a large village, you know, I grew up in a small town. I don't know, did anybody else grow up in a small town? My small town was two hundred and eight people. You know, a thousand people in a small town, that's five times the size. That's still a pretty small town. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And I think as we bring this plan forward, and I know I'm getting into the plan, but I think, like you said, it's all tied together. It is subjective, but when it comes down to it, this is a four season resort that we are. Trying to cluster, preserve open space and do the right thing. And I think that, you know, we're we're heading in that direction when you start to really factor in all of these all of these elements. Um, a couple of things I want to touch on specifically, the height comment has come up. We were looking for five extra feet to to have a little more flexibility to do some things architecturally. Talking to Moron, he's he's fine going back to fifty. It's not worth, you know, biting at five feet. So just to touch on that. And and then the other part of that is that there have been, I think it was uh Bruce Keswick mentioned the South Village portion. We are in conversations. Uh, you know, to discuss how we could make that possibly uh conservationist and open space possibly move that into the core of the development. Uh, you know, we think that 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 can be a a positive there if it can work out. You know, financially and feasibly for the developer. Um, but I know we've met with them. I wasn't able to make the last Saturday meeting, but I think two of the last three Saturdays we've met with the Viking Drive folks and. And they've been great. Uh, we've also talked about, you know, how we can help them have access to the projects, the skiing portion that they've had, you know, kind of cowboy in it. And in the good, in the old days, just hopping on through through a neighbor's property. We want to make sure that the neighbor that's going to allow that is okay with that, but we're working very closely with them on on how we can be a good neighbor in that regard. Um, so in summary, for me, we really have two options to date. We can pursue this rezon. Uh, which I think is obviously, you know, the the general plan's guiding uh guiding direction. Um, but the reality is we can also go back to our current zone. The rezon would give us more flexibility to say pull some of that density out of the South Village and put it down at the uh. At the ski beach, so to speak. Uh, current zoning wouldn't, and I think to Charlie's point. Uh, and you can look at projects all over the place that that are able to justify, you know, putting putting ski and ski houses on on the hillside. We prefer to not do that, and that's why we've pushed it currently down to the very south border. But I think, you know, we do know that we have that second option, but we're looking for your guidance to tell us what what you prefer. And again, thank you for your time. And I don't know. This is a good time to talk about, are we gonna move into a work session on this? It seems like we kind of blended the entire.
We're gonna, unfortunately, we're gonna pass on the work session tonight.
I think we kind of, you know, we kind of did it.
Yeah. Thank, I want to thank you for the the time you spent with the community, you guys' outreach. That's it's very much appreciated.
Commissioners, I know we're getting long in the evening and I uh if there's any other questions you have for staff, obviously, we're happy to answer them. If you guys want to provide any other comments via email for us to work in on, in the meantime, we're happy to do that. Looking forward, the fifth is when we will readdress these topics, so we can anticipate this being back on the agenda to go through some more of the details. Just any other final comments?
John, I don't know. I want to make sure you can still hear us and see. Commissioner Lewis, sorry.
I'm here.
So commissioners, this was was posted for a public hearing. We did have the public hearing. We we closed the public hearing. Do we need to have a motion before we move on to other agenda items?
We should, however you want to do this, you should either look at tabling this, it's kind of a buy funding or. I'll I'll entertain a motion from planning commission for how we go forward.
I uh, I think this has been a great meeting. We've got a lot of information. But what we need time to do is now with the information, they're getting up to speed, we have. To look at the details of this proposal. Because it could be a very good tool. Uh, it sounds like from the developer, the current zoning would work. But restricts some good things that could be happening. I have a, I have a concern that uh, my only concern with this uh form based. Zoning is that. It is too in the weeds. It's like saying, okay, form based zoning. You, we're gonna have an artist's place where artists can go and create and be unique and do their thing. But the art they create has to look like this. So we defeated the purpose by getting two in the weeds. I look at the pictures here of uh the shed roof, the shed dormers. I would think ten years ago, those pictures wouldn't have been in our proposal. Because it wasn't popular and people didn't really look at that. So what's gonna be in architecturally popular in ten years? Are we we foreclosing what can be done creatively creatively in the future? So I just caution us all. Yeah, this may be a great idea, but let's not make it too detailed. Keep it in the macro, not the micro. And I think. From my perspective, we need more time now to digest and look at the specifics. And the hour is late and I propose a move that we table. Action on this for tonight and schedule it for the next time that we, the the soonest we can meet while it's all fresh.
Clarification, Scott, you mentioned that the fifth is when we would meet next.
Correct.
And that, assuming we have a quorum, that's when this can be.
Re discussed.
Re re actioned, we can make action on, or does it have to be?
It depends on what you guys feel comfortable with. We can, we've had a public hearing that satisfies the requirement. We can have more public hearing if you guys would like to take more public comment, but uh it's up to you guys to decide how you want to move forward from here.
So in the fifth, we can uh readdress this or we can table it again, I guess, some options. Have a motion for a table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Trevor?
Yeah, John.
Um, I was gonna say, after we have a second, I'd actually like to discuss it for a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I I guess I do want to make a comment just from my perspective. That, you know, first of all, this is a very difficult thing to. Talk about with villages, and I think Charlie was very articulate with describing the need for for villages. And, you know, that is how we're planning to take the density off the valley floor and not have it spread out. Um, and if you take a sixteen thousand unit, you know, as gospel, you know, where are we gonna hide sixteen thousand units? I mean, that's the big question here, not just Nordic. And, you know, if you take half or ten thousand of those and say, okay, that's gonna kind of naturally spread itself, no matter what we do. We're only gonna get, you know, six or eight thousand things to hide in a village. And if we only have seven villages, we only have, you know, they're gonna be seven, they're gonna be a thousand units each. So it's it's very difficult to fit what we have where we're trying to put it, you know, not to mention utilities and can we sustain it? Which we can't do it until we can't anyway. But i- if that, if those are the numbers we're working with, then I I really, 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 as a as a developer and a business person and someone who lives in the valley. I would just implore everybody to keep in mind that, you know, nothing we do should increase the density, period. Developers don't need bonuses. I'm here to tell you, we don't need bonuses. We don't need deals on hotel rooms. We don't. You can't talk people into doing low income housing or employee housing because it just doesn't pencil. So, you know, we're stuck with. Property rights that are X. Let's say they're sixteen thousand. Don't make them seventeen thousand. We don't need it. So. So it's tough to fit them, and I think Charlie's doing a great job and form base is probably a good way to do it. But um, you know, at the end of the day, it's tough to fit them and it's. It's important that we don't grow that. So I just wanted to emphasize that. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. And so we have a motion. We have a second. And we'll go ahead and all all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, would anybody like to explain their their vote? Okay. Um, that being said, I I guess I would like to explain my vote a little bit. I like um, I I like the idea of the the villages. I think it's a great way to. Um, to to put that, put the put the density and and do it effectively, which is better for for the the overall county. Um, some of these items that are in here, uh, we have tried, we we looked at and we're looking at, we were, as John or Commissioner Burton put it, we. We can revisit and 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 try and mesh with what we've heard from the community to try and give your input as from the community. In this, these, this zone, so that we can better better fit what you're looking for with what we've heard tonight. So thank you for all of your comments. Um, and I know I appreciate it. I think that's why I I vote to 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 table, so we can, we can make sure we get those those things right that you've asked for. Um, with that on our agenda, we uh we have another item for a work session. I I I don't know if I have to motion to to dismiss that or postpone that.
You can just postpone it to the next meeting. Um, and that's maybe something you want to discuss as a planning commission. Do you want to look at a public hearing on the fifth? Or do you just want to look at a work session on that on the fifth and then have a public hearing in a later day? Um, typically, we, you know, bring items before you in work session format before we actually go to public hearings. Um, the applicant requested to go straight to a public hearing on this, but, you know, it's really what your comfort level is and where you want to be on this.
I I'll give my opinion, which is I would like to, I I wouldn't like to make a. On the fifth, make a uh a decision on this, push this number three. Form based village and do a work based work session on the fourth. Uh, that's my my two cents.
I think it'd be ver- very beneficial to do a work session on the ZTA because first it's just all of the permitted uses. We didn't get to go through those, some of those, some of the finer details. That are, I think, have significant impact. So. And then to find out and have them have the time to explain what they have discovered with with the things you wanted to look into. So. I would. Very much like to have a work session. Make a vote.
It might be nice to the ask the applicant, um, you know, maybe their feelings if you want to bring that into play. You don't have to, but.
Yeah, so applicant, um, I think what we're talking about now is the next meeting, which is typically just a work session. Um, where we will either make a motion on on this item that we've discussed tonight in depth and looked at the options, and then we can make amendments. Then and then take a vote. Or then do a work session on that item and the previous item and then move that to what date is that for the next for the?
To, let me just put the calendar here. Um, that would move it to. The twenty sixth, I believe it is.
And that would be the public hearing for the. And that would be the public hearing for the 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 rezone. And we we would, if if we were to do the work session on both, next week, we could do a. Vote. On both items that same night.
Well, you just, you'd have to have the public hearing before you could take any action on the reason.
Twenty six is what, yeah, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would, if we can lump them together, I mean, it kind of happened tonight naturally, right? So. I I think that we have to make that decision tonight. I think trying to understand it. With long, making sure that. Is that something? We can work with Charlie and Scott in the next day or two.
Then we could shoot out, you know, we could talk about it, and then we could shoot information out to you as a planning commission and get your feedback. On it as well.
May maybe I'm being unclear. I think that we we could still make a a motion on this on the fifth because the public hearing has been done. The rezone, we need to do a a a public hearing. And that we're talking about either having that take place on the fifth or on the twenty sixth, and I think the overall sentiment is to do the rezone or the public session. Our public hearing on the twenty sixth. Okay, is that?
I think with everybody, I think that makes sense in our mind. And that's it'll be here before we know it, right? But. Yeah, I I think if you guys, to me, the bigger issue is this document for you guys to get comfortable with. You know, I think we did do a work session with this group that was on Zoom. You know, so we have done that. I think you guys have seen the plan, you know, for for a while now. We've presented it to the public four or five times. You know, so if we can get you comfortable, I mean, I I guess part of me says. You know, you need to tell us that you're comfortable with moving forward with this reason. The text amendment portion of it, as it applies to Nordic, and then that's going to dictate the reason. If you just say this doesn't make any sense there, then obviously the reason goes away. So. I think what you're proposing time wise makes sense, but let us, if it's okay, we can pencil that in tentatively and then talk to these guys tomorrow. After. Laurent, his his development team maybe had a chance to, that two or three of them are in France, so they're. They're they're probably listening now. I think it's early enough if I remember.
Any other comments? Anybody agree? So it sounds like we're going to do the public hearing on the twenty sixth. And we'll do work session, which for the public information, we could very well vote on this. Legislative item for the amendment of the form based village for Nordic as possible that night. That being said.
Was it suggested that we could possibly do the public hearing on the rezone? In the work session?
Yes.
We would have to notice it in order for that to be accomplished. So. We would need to either work towards the fifth or the twenty sixth prior to that meeting, because if we don't send out the notices, we can't have a public hearing. I understand that. Then how far in advance do you need to know? Yeah. It would have to be by Thursday or. Because we need to have it before the end of the week to get give staff time to prepare.
I have another question. One gentleman requested that we hold it in the valley, and I know we did that on the gravel pit also. What do you think about that?
I like that idea. It's just logistics and timing and. Trying to work things out for staff. I, yeah. Typically, we need a few months to prepare for that. Meeting and it might be a little difficult. I'm not saying no to it, but it's just hard to accommodate for that. At such short notice. And I really wish. We have a facility up there to do it, and it's just hard to get staff up there and then budget. Timing in turn.
You or Commissioner Burton, are you wanting to, are you leaning towards public comment on the fifth?
Well, I'm just. My tendency is always to move things along because they take forever. It seems to me this like buying a car. I'm going to sign a contract to buy the car. What does a car look like? Well, I don't know. What color is it? I don't know. And that's what this. Document we looked at tonight is, what does a car look like? And once you know what it looks like, then the rezone is buying a car. But in that where we are, you you can't do the rezone till you know what the rezone looks like. That'd be nice to, I think the developer would have more direction on where you're at with the ordinance. On the fifth. And. Yeah, I I think right now there's a little bit of limbo is the vibes I'm getting. There's concerns that you have that need to be addressed based upon public input that staff's going to be working with the developer. We're going to get.
Everybody agrees, I think we do the public hearing on the twenty sixth, and we do the work session that would give us more information for the the rezone. And then we can also, we can, that would also, if we could make a decision, table this particular item. Did we have in your motion a date to when we tabled it to? Is it just the next meeting?
We we just tabled it to the next meeting.
Which would be the fifth. So I think from a. Logistical or timeline sense, we would look at making that. Untable that or make a decision there, whatever that recommendation is, and then do a work session as planned here. Okay? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? It looks like we do have one. Do I need to open it, Rick, like we did? Okay.
Do I need to state my name?
Yes, please. Name and address.
Phil Swanson, North Ogden City. These meetings are wonderful. Appreciate all that you do. Appreciate everybody that's here. Can you do something about the temperature control? I love saunas. But sitting here for four plus hours in a sauna. With uncirculated air is miserable. It really is miserable. So can we do something about just making it a little more user friendly in here?
Thank you.
And and most, some of the women, I know Sean and Shannon's up there going, I I like it. I think it's comfortable. I'm I'm dying. I think a lot of the people are.
Okay, I'm 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 Jan Fulmer. I live in Eden and. I really wanted to provide these comments, not related to anything on the agenda. But first to thank you, I know you volunteer your time. I know how time consuming this is for you and really appreciate it. But I'm going to read this because as approaching my senior years, I sometimes forget what I'm saying in the middle of a sentence. All right. There can be developers wanting extra development units for many different reasons. However, if this request comes to your commission in whatever form it does, please consider having the developer find development units. That can be transferred from owners having development units on buildable land. In other words, a geological survey has been done that says you can build on this land and then transfer development units from there. The developer and the rated owner, they can agree on any compensation that wants to go back and forth. This will help maintain the threshold of the projected valley buildout on the floor in Ogden Valley that is in the Ogden Valley General Plan. Please, please do not consider agreeing to bonus development units. I know Charlie, we probably disagree on this, but bonus development units were added. As an amendment to the Ogden Valley General Plan by the then Weber County Commissioners with absolutely no input from Ogden Valley residents. It was done behind closed doors. And when you think of all the public meetings we held to get input, never once did any of those commissioners come forward. Or anybody who supported bonus development units come forward and bring them up at the public meeting. It's a sore sore spot for a lot of residents. The other thing I'd like to notice, note, I don't know if you've seen what the legislature has passed this last session. I think that's one of the more dangerous times of the year in Utah, when the legislature is in session. But they passed legislation that's going to take a lot of review and reading about affordable dwelling units. And I started to go through it and I read most of it twice, and I'm sure I've got to go back and read it ten times again. But it really is creating a lot of work for municipalities, counties to go out there and inventory. Well, how many affordable dwelling units do you have? Well, what's affordable? And if you don't, what are you going to do about it? And that's not going to be easy, and I'm sure it's something that's going to have to be considered when items come up before you in the future. So. That's it, and thank you very much.
Is someone online?
Okay, Ron, if you want to give us a couple of comments, but please keep it brief. Pastime.
He's muted.
Yes, am I online?
Yes.
Thank you. These are comments or questions possibly for Rick Rover. And it goes back to item one. Lighting compliance with the storage units and that. I forwarded these questions to Tammy also. But they weren't, they they weren't specifically addressed. Has to do with measuring the. Specific Kelvin of lights that are that are installed. The applicant asked. And in their proposal said they wanted to put streetlights in that were four thousand Kelvin, which is above the county ordinance. So my question is, is one, how does the county actually know that the right Kelvin light is being installed? Are they crying? Are they just going on words from the applicant, or do they actually have a meters that they measure? And do they have any examples of when they've done this for either commercial or residential properties? Thanks.
I'm seeing Charlie, would you like to address that?
We require the applicant to show us the bulb on the back of the packaging. It tells us what the Kelvin is.
Also, you have to get cut sheets on those lights, correct?
When when everything is submitted, yeah, we have to have cut sheets, the luminaires and everything has to be submitted to us. But if it's an interchangeable bulb, then if they'd have to show us the packaging that shows what that is. And then we do have the ability to go up there and and gauge what the temperature is, but we don't have a light meter yet, but we haven't needed one yet. So we'll see what this proposal.
Okay, let's get one more real brief.
For a brief, Doug, we were Doug, we were thirty seven one Viking Drive, and this may be more for the planners, but we talked about the the calculations for the density and things from the developer. I'd just like to see them at least two weeks before the the the. The open session, if that's possible through the twenty sixth, so we can communicate at time.
So. These guys do fantastic job. We we are very fortunate as a county to have Scott and Rick and team and Charlie. As as our professional planners, they they do a fantastic job. They're highly educated in this and they do, they have a lot of work on their plate. I know they they try and get things out as early as possible. I don't know that two weeks is will be will be a little bit, but I I think they can do it by Wednesday or something they do.
I guess just enough time to to review prior to the.
Yeah, twenty six. Maybe they could put it in the public, public announcement. Is that reasonable? Okay, any remarks from the planning commissioners? Do you have a comment? Okay. Planning Director Report, Rick.
No, I think you guys handled the meeting very well. You gave the public adequate time to talk. I know that, you know. There's never enough time, but you moved the meeting along. We got a lot of comments and so.
Thank you. Remarks from legal counsel.
I'm excited now to move into an hour of legal training, number nine on the agenda. Great job tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, I motion to adjourn. Second, we have to do that? I don't even know. All right, you gotta bang the gavel. Oh, I gotta bang the gavel.